I'm not sure who I lost. I'm trying to gain everyone I can back.
Um, I don't know. Yeah, we have all the commissioners. Okay. Sorry, had a problem. Are we calling the cases now? Oh, you did already? No, we didn't call the case yet. We were waiting for Elise to get everybody. Okay. So that we'll have a big delay.
I think I permanently lost the architect, but I should have a person from AKRF and I should have.
The architect can't call in?
No, he said it too. He's done. He had another meeting, but I don't think we'll meet. Most of your questions were Stonefield questions and they helped design the plans.
Okay, so let's call the application. Okay, this is a continuation of the public hearing for February 9, 2021, 10:00 AM session. It's 2019, 263 BZ, 2122 Richmond Avenue, Staten Island. Ms. Goldair, let me swing you in.
I need the rest of the people to swear.
Are they not in yet?
No, if you are a member of the applicant team, please raise your hand in Zoom to be admitted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Looking for Andrew Valari. Zach.
There are a number of people who called in with their phones. To raise your hand, you need to press star nine.
And Christine. Christian, Christian, I should have a Christian Thompson, Andrew Valari and Zach.
Elisa, I'm on for Christian.
Oh, there you go. We got one.
Okay, who's the I'm?
Phone number seven. Phone number 799, please press star six to unmute and state your name.
Can someone make me a host? Co-host? Thank you. The person with last three numbers 799 who's not permitted to talk, please dial star six to unmute yourself and then and state your name so we can change your name on the screen. Can't seem to get there. Why don't we get started? And did you say Valari is one of the people he's just admitted?
Okay, great. That's so we at least the two main people we really, really need are here, so we can swear it.
Okay, raise your right hand.
Nathaniel.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
I do.
I do.
Thank you. Please proceed, Ms. Goldair.
Elise Goldair from Eric Palatnik PC. I think first we wanted to address the car radios and the noise. We're more than happy to put signs up that say, respect your neighbors, please turn your radio off in the landscaping when you pull up or when you pull up right by the menu board. And then also there was questions that tied into Brown had questions about numbers on the plan, so we will have the noise consultant Nathaniel explain that as well as more about the car radios.
Okay, there's some, the person who's admitted who's 799, do we know who that is? Last three digits, 799?
I don't know.
Go unmute yourself. It's star.
That's me. I apologize. I'm not actually in this hearing. I'm in a later hearing, so maybe I should all.
Oh.
Exit out of the hearing. I apologize.
Okay, well, Kirk, can you move him out?
Do that. So, thank you.
Right. Um, okay. All right. Go ahead.
So with respect to car radios and car noise or vehicular noise in the queue of the proposed Starbucks, I think a couple of things, as Elise mentioned, of course, the signs are a one method of deterrents to reduce the potential for car radio noise being too loud and cars themselves, when idling, are typically going to be relatively quiet. And with respect to the speaker that's been the main focus of noise mitigation, the speaker has to be louder, of course, than the car idling in order for it to function as it's intended. So the noise barrier that's been proposed for the project would be sufficient or not sufficient, but it would be beneficial for both car vehicular noise from the engine, from the radio, and of course, from the speaker itself on the menu board. It's also worth noting that car radio noise emissions are restricted by New York City noise code as well.
Right, so but so you know, you can cite all those code things. We have a lot of experience with these drive-throughs. And one of the things we've learned in particular over the last year, because we had one group of homeowners who have been suffering from as a result of one of the drive-throughs, they've recorded videos of light next to a drive-through and we learned a lot of things. And so noise code, whatever, people pull in and they have, they feel like, you know, the car is their domain and they turn the music up as loud as possible. And then they try to, they maybe turn it down while they're just ordering, but while they're waiting to pick up, the music is blaring, right? So that's one issue. And then even types of cars where they take pleasure in the loud muffler phenomena, which is probably not even allowed, but nonetheless, it's going to be down, right? That kind of thing. So those are the things that we're dealing with. And then the other one is the trash pickup where we hear in the middle of the night, the truck that comes to pick up the dumpster, and that's part of the question here is, I don't really understand.
That's the difference. We're going to address that as well.
Okay, so but anyway, the trash that the truck that comes to pick up the dumpster has this loud crashing aspect to it. And so at 2:00 in the morning, crash, 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 and you're thrown out of bed if you're too close, if you live too close to the site. Those are the issues, real life, that we're dealing with, and that's why we'd like you to address them.
And I think that we heard you, and that's what we hope by putting in the signs, having acoustic events, having the landscaping and closing by 10:00 PM, we hope in combination will all be mitigation measures that will stop these annoying people.
Right, and with respect to those aforementioned noises, fortunately, for the sake of the residents, the noise barrier is effective for all sorts of noises. And it will sufficiently mitigate noise emissions of any type from the from the proposed project at the property line.
Right, but do we know what kind of noises? I mean, the barrier is only the barrier, right? What kind of data do we have on that barrier for impulsive noises that reach? You know, we've seen numbers like 97 decibels or trucks, for example, we just had another case where we learned that they produce 97 decibels when the air brakes go on or whatever. So just as examples, right? So what level of attenuation does your wall provide? And I don't know if we have data on that wall.
Right, so with respect to how the wall performs acoustically, essentially, the way an acoustical barrier works is it needs to be sufficiently massive and continuous so that the only sound that is transmitted through to the property itself is radiated over the barrier itself, which means a lot of that acoustical energy is lost as it's as it what's referred to as diffracts over the barrier. So there's no direct line of sight to the property line because of the functional acoustical barrier. That's all essentially to say that obviously we don't have a proper wall, right? There's no ceiling or something that it's connecting to the way we would in an interior environment. So the barrier has to be sufficiently high, which is what why this barrier was proposed to be six feet.
But so that's what I mean. Where'd you come up with six feet? Trucks are higher than six feet. Arguably, well, for one, an SUV is borderline higher than six feet when they're blaring music at the window. So how did you come up with six feet? How did you come up with the type of barrier? We know a lot about this, so you can actually get very technical. How did you come up with the particular spec on your barrier and what is your spec on your barrier?
So the six feet is intended to break line of sight for the primarily was intended to break line of sight from the speaker at the menu board, which is somewhere around three feet above grade. Most speakers from within the cars, from within the vehicles in the queue, will be well below the six feet. While you're exactly right, there are SUVs that are over six feet tall. We're talking about the windows, possibly like maybe the tops of the windows and the roof of the vehicles above six feet. But in terms of the source itself, whether it's the idling motor or the speakers from within the vehicle, they're well below six feet. So that that line of sight is broken effectively by the six-foot barrier. And in terms of the spec.
Are you saying that if we if we connect the source, which is, let's say, it's the engine or the hunk of of a truck or of a car, if we connect that point to the top of the barrier and extend them, it's going to be beyond the window of the adjacent homes?
Below.
I think I understand what you're asking. Our direction was with respect to the property line itself, not so much to the windows of the residences.
No, no.
I think we would have.
Yeah, let me just correct you there. What we're trying to do is protect the residences from annoyance caused by this drive-through, which is both speaker-generated, car-generated, honking-generated, noise from the radios and all of that generated. So it's and it's the property line is a simple way of saying no increase in ambient noise above that location, beyond that location. But our goal is so that you're not woken up in the middle of the night, like one of some of the residents who are nearby, another project that we're looking at, in the middle of the night, they can hear the radios, the speak, the menu board, they can hear everything, right? And they live on the second floor. So that wall needs to be high enough to do the job, right? Not just, not just the job of the height of a person.
Sure. So I think that's just something we'll have to look at to do a sightline study to make sure the noise barrier is sufficiently high to break line of sight between those sources that we discussed and the the windows of the residences nearby.
Okay, great.
In a supplemental submission, it wasn't from New York City, it was using your data, though. Stonefield provided a sound section, but that was specifically from the menu board to the residents. Yeah, not these other.
Yes. As I said, we've learned a lot. We've learned a lot in the last year about other sound sources. It's not just the menu board. As it turns out, that was kind of naive, I have to say on our part. So, okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so I guess the next question we can address is, I believe that Mr. Valari spoke with Starbucks about trash. So if he can address that and how the way that the trash is taken out and received at this site.
Sure. Good afternoon. Just for the record, Andrew Valeri on behalf of Stonefield Engineering. I did connect with the Starbucks representatives regarding how trash would be handled here. If I may share my screen, I'd like to just share with you the floor plans.
Yes.
Okay. Screen, there we go. All right, everyone can see the floor plan?
Yes.
The trash room is located on the, what's the west side, the top side of the plan right now? It's got doors that open internal to the space. There is a door to the external side of the building right here. So the trash would be wheeled out, these doors to then get picked up by a third-party hauler. In terms of the frequency of trash pickup, seven, I'm sorry, 7-Eleven, Starbucks mentioned that they would be picked up as needed, that they anticipate about four times a week for trash pickup, and they would occur very briefly while they do that. Madam Chair, you mentioned the concept of a front-loading trash pickup with a dumpster that needs to get dropped. That's not what's proposed here. It's just standard trash receptacles that get wheeled out and then trash bags taken out of the receptacles and then put in the back of the truck. So in terms of noise that's added as a result of this, you know, there's no heavy banging of a dumpster on the ground here.
So this is the part that I'm not getting. The deal with with the collector is 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM. So if what you're saying is that they, like a residential trash can, they pull their trash can out and they put it on in front of the store, is that what you're saying?
And they don't. It wouldn't be left out overnight, no.
What?
The trash would not be left out overnight.
Well, then how does it? How does it work? Is there a staff member who's at the site up until the collector comes?
The trash hauler would have access to the building to go in to the trash room.
Oh, the trash hauler actually goes inside the building to get the trash?
Correct. Same way that like a cleaning service works in a commercial office, they have access to the to the space off-hours to go in, get the trash and then pull it out, put the empty receptacles back in the space.
Actually, a cleaning service in an office building is a cleaning service in an office building. They put the trash in the containers and then they bring it out to the service elevator that brings it down and it sits outside until the commercial haul or.
I meant, just to clarify, I meant, I meant the concept of the concept I was referring to is the when the cleaner has access to the space that would be locked during off-hours, not not the concept of how the trash would be taken out.
Very confused. I never heard of a commercial carting company that actually has a key and then walks inside the establishment and grabs the trash. Can you verify that, please?
We'll double-check that with Starbucks and get back to you. Absolutely.
We need an affirmative statement that the commercial hauler has a key or something, the code to come into Starbucks's, you know, enterprise and walk inside and grab trash cans and bring it outside, empty it and put it back. I've never heard of a carting company that does that because these are commercial carters and all they do is pick the trash up from the street, basically, or from the trash containers that are out. I could think of all kinds of liabilities for that one. Yeah, I'm like, wow, that's quite a service unless it's a devoted Starbucks service, which I can't imagine exists.
We'll provide verification. We understand the the comment.
Yes, okay.
I think we have to go back to Nathaniel for a second because Commissioner Brown asked a few questions about numbers on plans that didn't link up. And I think that explaining how we provided sound will help answer that question.
Yeah, it was on the section and sound diagram. So if you see like the menu board, there's there are consent, there's like circles and the second circle out says 60 dB A at what looks like 32 feet. But then if you look at the line that goes from the speaker to the property line, that's 28 feet and that's further away. So was that an accident or am I reading this wrong and I'm supposed to be getting something else out of it?
We will revise that diagram to clarify, but I think what we're looking at is two different two different parameters here. One is the data provided by the speaker manufacturer, the decibel level at a given distance. And then one is our calculation, which incorporates the physical parameters of the project-specific site itself, inclusive of the noise barrier and sound drop-off over distance.
So it is 32 feet from the menu board?
The noise barrier is.
No, no, that little 60 dB A at 32 feet, that's correct?
That is not correct. That is not scaled.
I think that's just for illustra- yeah.
Oh, okay, because that would actually be past the noise barrier.
Can everyone see? Sorry, sorry, Commissioner Otley Brown. I just wanted to explain a little differently. So if you can see the site plan now, there's a green line and a red line overlaid. The red line is a direct kind of orthogonal expanse of sound. And I know I'm explaining this poorly, Mr. Fletcher, but the 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 green line here is the shortest distance to the property line. And what we had done was we tried to, in error, overlay the two. And we have to update this document is the shortest answer I can give you.
Okay.
We basically are showing, we're basically showing the cross-section of the green line, but we're showing the sound effect of the red line.
Right, and so if if let's say the wall wasn't there at the green line's end, then that red line would extend past the theoretical wall because it would go out in every direction, that 32 feet, which would be past the wall.
Right, and I think what's important here, when you're looking at the red and the green line, is that this speaker has what we refer to as directivity. So when it's pointing directly at something, the sound drop off drops off at a certain rate. But when you're off that axis, it actually drops off quite a bit quicker. So that's why we analyzed at two different locations, one on axis and then also at the nearest property line.
Okay, I understand it better. Thanks.
And we'll clarify in the next submission.
And so the next comment is just to go along with the sound wall. We can extend the sound wall per Commissioner Shad's comment. The reason it was not extended is because there's a plan for a big commercial property next door. So it was commercial with commercials, so we didn't think to extend it, but it is possible.
Thank you. And also the that by the placement of the barrier itself, it need to be flush from your neighbor's side, not your side, if you're going to go with the option that use the light flange section.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, the aesthetics of the neighbor for the neighbor is always a big concern of ours, right?
And then the next item I think we should move to is the turning movement analysis per Commissioner Chana's question. Andrew, it's all you.
Just give me one second. I want to just reference the plan. I believe the comment was relating to the truck delivery, which, just to explain that a little bit more, the SU 30 is a, it stands for a single-unit 30-foot-length box truck, very standard delivery vehicle. You see them all over the city. I would say it's it's a medium-sized box truck. It's not one of the, you know, heavy tractor-trailers. And the difference between a tractor-trailer and a single-unit truck is that the cab doesn't articulate. It's a very standard box truck. One of the things on our plan that we're showing, I'm going to share my screen just one more time. Sure. I believe there was a comment from Madam Chair about the fact that the truck movement into the property and then around the drive-through and exiting. I think it overlaps with some of the curb here. What I want to point out is that when we do these analyses, these lines indicate the outer edge of the vehicle body. They're not the tires. The tires are within the vehicle body. So this overhang here, it looks like a conflict on paper, but basically what that means is that the front bumper, the front bumper of the truck would swing over over the curb and the tire would stay within the asphalt area. It wouldn't hop the curb or anything like that. It looks like that on paper. But basically what this means is that the vehicle body slightly swings over the curb, which is which is very, very common. And again, this is what I mean by box truck. It's a very, very common delivery vehicle.
So so I'm trying to understand the reason you did this for, I noticed that there was a comment from the council member about the delivery access. So the reason that you're looking at this box truck was to respond to the council member's concern about deliveries to the site, is that?
That's correct.
Is that correct? So so why wouldn't the delivery? So the area that's hatched in the middle, where you have your in-and-out arrows are, there's this hatched in the middle?
Yep.
That a drivable surface?
Yes, yes. So that's the same elevation as the rest of the parking lot. And there was another comment about can this be curbed? It's a very good question. This area here, it really delineates the difference between the drive-through lane and also the rest of the parking lot. And you'll notice there's a faint dash line along the back of it. What that's there to represent is that it's a, it's what's called mountable curb. So you know, your standard curb is a perpendicular block curb. It's, you know, it's pretty hard to drive over that. A mountable curb is somewhere in between a speed bump and a curb. So it's actually, it's meant to delineate that you should be driving in a certain area, but you can drive over it. So the answer to your question is, is this the same elevation? Can you drive over it? Yes, that's the exact design.
Okay, because one of the things that you said, because I'm always looking at the landscaping, where you've got the front of the cab essentially going over the curb where you've got five feet of vegetation. I'm not liking that the vegetation is now in sort of in constant risk as the delivery trucks are essentially crashing into all that carefully managed landscaping.
Understood, understood. We'll make sure that the landscaping plan, it doesn't show too many, too much vegetation too close to that property line.
No, 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 the opposite. I don't know, the opposite. So here you go. The whole point of the five-foot, whatever vegetation strip is the buffer for the residents. That's part of it. And so you can't, you're trying to have both things both ways. No, the truck does not win over the landscaping. The landscaping has to win over the truck. So to the extent that your truck cannot make the turn, you need to modify the turn and not and not sacrifice the landscaping in order to make the turn. So I don't know if that means you pull the building a little bit closer to the street line or a little bit over to the left or something like that, but you you can't show landscaping and like you can't giveth and then taketh away. That's not, that's not.
I understand. I understand. It's a very minor infraction and we'll, I think there's ways to that we could fix on this next submission. Understood your concern.
I have a, yeah, I have a question. So if, so am I to understand that a delivery vehicle will have to take this path to get out? It couldn't deliver its product within the parking area and and depart from that same?
I mean, it could leave from the same driveway. If it pulled a K-turn, it could. But we're showing a movement around the building, very standard, common turn, and the property is under common ownership. Deliveries would occur off-peak times when there's nobody in the drive-through, nobody in the parking lot. So yeah, to answer your question, it could, but we.
Yeah, maybe it's better to show that instead because you're kind of ruining your argument as long as an SUV, as long as the people have like explorers and suburbans can make this turn. And I don't know, what kind of a car did you use to determine the regular vehicular?
We used the P-car, which is the industry standard. It's a very large vehicle. It's larger than virtually all vehicles on the road today. You know, it's it's almost 19 feet long. It's seven feet wide. That's very large. So that that does, you know, there's tow trucks that are smaller than that.
I have to say, when I saw this, I thought it's a delivery, the pickup truck is picking up coffee and it's like, why is it getting out of there before it hits the menu board? But if the guy is delivering, he's going to deliver by the door. And so it's, it will have to make the K-turn or will be stopping in the parking area and then we'll have to. So I think you're just simply, it's better for you to simplify the what is more likely to happen.
100%. It would stop in the parking area to do its delivery.
But actually, that brings up an interesting question. So we keep forgetting that people who drive box trucks also need coffee. So, so a person in a box truck might actually come to Starbucks to grab a coffee. And and now what you're talking about is putting those landscaping at risk. So I go back to that same question. You need to improve the turn so that a box truck with with some people in it who just want to grab a cup of coffee before they begin their long. who just wanna grab a cup of coffee before they begin their long day can clear, okay?
Understood.
Okay.
At least, do you want me to go on to the traffic study-related comments or do you have any other things?
Would like that, yes.
Traffic study, okay. So I wanna explain what was assumed to be part of the no-build analysis and then why does the level of service table for the build look very much the same as the no-build? Under our no-build analysis, we are assuming that the building on the property for T-Mobile stays as is and then there's nothing else proposed on the property. And you know, we, we also accounted for what standard is a, a growth rate. We used the secret technical manual to figure out what the growth rate should be for Staten Island. So basically, the difference between the build year, I'm sorry, the project, the no-build and the build is that in the build scenario, you have a Starbucks with a drive-through on this property. Both scenarios have background growth rate to account for some population growth or trends in employment. And the difference with the build year is that there then would be a drive-through Starbucks. There's no other commercial development proposed or envisioned as part of the no-build.
So this is the part I'm not, completely not getting. So the no-build assumes no additional commercial use on the site. So therefore, no cars pulling off the curb cut from the T-Mobile any more than what's predicted for nice growth of T-Mobile, right?
Correct.
Can't be anywhere near what the amount of traffic would be drawn by a drive-through for Starbucks. And so what you're saying is somehow people knowing there's a Starbucks here and they're driving, it's a destination drive, it's not just pass-by drives, it's destination to go get my coffee. You're saying that that is having zero impact on traffic compared to the no-build? And I don't understand that at all.
So let me, let me explain the theory behind tables. You're looking probably at tables three and four in the traffic impact study?
I don't, yeah, maybe. I don't know. Yeah, go ahead.
Right, so what a level of service does is that it's, it's a unit of measure that the industry looks at for, does the project represent an impact on the adjacent roadway network, the public, things of that nature? A level of service is a measure of delay. How long does it take me to go through the intersection? How long it take me to do a left turn versus going through, making a right turn? And then there's an overall level of service, which is a weighted average of, of how the intersection operates. And it's weighted average because you could have a lot of volume on your main line, the busy street, and not so much volume on the side street. If the main street works very well, the overall level of service is gonna be weighted towards where that volume is. So under this analysis, the project is on Richmond Avenue. It's a median divided highway, so all traffic has to come southbound and exit and continue to head southbound. We do envision more traffic approaching the southbound approach of the intersection. And the, with all, not all, but ninety-nine percent of traffic signals in New York City, they are pre-timed, meaning that it gets the same amount of green time for, you know, every day. Whereas elsewhere, signals are adaptive to the amount of demand. In New York City, they are always pre-timed under the assumption that there are pedestrians that need to cross these intersections very, very frequently, which, which they are. So under a pre-time signal, the, with or without Starbucks moving in here, the light's gonna get the same amount of green time heading southbound. Now, what happens is, as a result of the project, there's more volume heading southbound. So that weighted average with the heavier movement going southbound, but the same level of service because the light's green for the same amount of time, the weighted average appears to improve. Let me give you an example. If you have an intersection, very, very simple, just a north-south, east-west intersection, and you have a hundred vehicles in every approach, say that the main street, it has a level of service of twenty seconds and the side street has a level of service of forty seconds. If all approaches have the same amount of volume, the average, the overall level of service will be a thirty-second, a thirty-second level of service. Now, if you increase the main line volumes to have more volume, a hundred and fifty vehicles as opposed to the side street staying at a hundred, the level of service, the overall level of service will shift towards the main line. It's not gonna be an overall of thirty seconds. It's gonna be an overall of twenty-five now. So here, when you have a pre-time signal, the light's gonna stay green for the exact same amount of time with and without the project. There'd be more traffic added to it. But what this analysis shows is that there's adequate capacity to support those extra vehicles that are now heading southbound. Overall, level of service shifts down.
But aren't you already at F? It's a pretty bad level of service, right?
For a left turn movement, which it would be, I don't envision much southbound lefts happening.
All right, and I, I don't wanna spend a lot of time on this. DOT is getting a copy, of course, of this.
Absolutely.
Real, so let's see what they have to say. Okay.
Okay, go ahead. I think that was all of the questions, unless I'm missing something.
No, I don't. I had a question, and that was with regards to one of the tables that was in the traffic analysis. And it's in the, trying to locate the table. Yep, it would have been on page A seven, appendix, regarding the turning movement slash pedestrian count.
You, just to confirm, I'm looking at the same thing you are. We have a hundred and sixty-page T I S.
It's the nineteen page.
Oh, nineteen.
Nine, nine, is it nineteen? Yeah, it's nineteen page.
Okay, yep, go ahead.
So if you can just explain what this diagram, and by the way, I have to thank you for reminding me of my highway capacity manual analysis that I used to do way back when I was in the transportation division. So it was a good, nice refresher.
I hope it wasn't so esoteric.
No, it was fun. I enjoyed doing the highway capacity manual analysis then.
Okay. Page nineteen of the traffic study, it's appendix page A seven. What that summarizes is how many vehicles we observed turn in and out of the existing T-Mobile driveways.
Okay.
So the highlighted sections are the, the peak hours. So we, we studied between seven A M. and two P M. And the busiest time in the morning is was highlighted from seven-thirty to eight-thirty. And then again, the busiest hour in the middle of the day, one to two is highlighted there. And what that's summarizing is right turns in and out of both of those driveways. And it's broken down into fifteen-minute increments.
Thank you, because it wasn't clear to me whether it was existing or proposed. I thought it was showing proposed, and that's why I was confused with the driveway three and four data.
Yep.
Now I understand it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The only, the last question was about pickup hours for the trash. It's not have urbans on site in the middle of the night. So if we could, in the same case of asking the carting company what, how this really works, limit pickup between ten and maybe a midnight or something like that, so that it's not happening at three in the morning, okay? All right then, are there, let's go to the public unless there's other comments. Okay, so the case that we are discussing currently is twenty nineteen two sixty-three V Z, twenty-one twenty-two Richmond Avenue, Staten Island. Wish to call in at six four six five five eight eight six five six. And the Zoom webinar ID number is nine nine eight two seven eight zero one two seven four. You're in the Zoom room, please raise your Zoom hand to speak. And, and there's one person who called in. If you wanna speak, raise your Zoom hand by dialing star nine. Okay, while we wait to see whether anyone will raise their hand or dial in, how much time do you need?
Oh, Chair, can I speak for?
Sure, of course.
I just wanted to say, so we're going to wait for the next submission because there's gonna be changes to the plans possibly based on the truck movement, landscape issue, as well as the, the changes to the noise study. So we'll wait to, to look at that. And I just wanna confirm, you still want, based on the discussion, do you still want D E P. to look at the revised noise study? Because generally, they, they usually just comment on the menu board aspects.
What we want, I don't know that there's data, they comment on the menu board cuz that's all we tell them, right? That's all we give them. But we actually now have other noise sources. And so I don't know if there's data in the, I don't think there is, in the noise study that's handling the output from radios and that kind of thing. So I'm not sure how D E P. could review it, but we'd like them to consider those other noise sources. And then maybe that way they can ask the consultant to provide data, right? Cuz at the moment, there's no data on those noise sources. There's only data on the menu board.
Right, I'm not sure if they would, like, we've asked this in the past and they said, especially in terms of the, the cars that are in the drive-through, they don't usually comment on them because they are regulated by the noise code. And if there's a violation, basically, it's a temporary source in terms of D E P.'s viewpoint. They would issue like a, but they can't issue a violation to a moving target.
I see. So all right, so now, so if they won't do it, they won't do it. But at least to understand the analytical method of the stationary noise source and then for the applicant to give us information on the mobile noise sources.
Okay, so we'll wait for the next submission and then we'll send that as well.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so then how much time to respond to?
Oh, um, I just wanted to note that somebody did raise their hand. Dimitro?
No, really? Oh, okay.
I have a architect named Dimitro for another application, so we could be confused.
Dimitrio Cornell Brady?
Yeah, he's on a different application, but he probably sees me here and thinks it's this one.
Okay, so we're not, we're not on that application yet. Thank you, yeah. So how much time to respond?
I think Nathaniel's part, the biggest part. So how much time do you need? Because then we have to wait for DOT and D E P. review, which take a while. So I don't want too much time.
So for, for our portion, we could do it in two weeks, but then there are the other reviews.
Well, I think we have to come back and then go to another hearing for the reviews, so that's.
Okay.
So I guess we would like. Is that, is that true, Chair? Or do you want us to send the?
No, I, we just decided that we're not going to send this out to DOT and D E P. Until after we get the final version of the layout. Isn't that what you were asking?
Oh, yes, okay, yes. That's what I was responding to. So since we need two more hearings, I guess we would like as little time as possible because then we're gonna have to wait for D E P. and DOT.
Okay, so what are we talking about? Three weeks to commit?
Andrew, is that good with you?
Yep, that works.
Okay.
All right, let's see what we can do. All right, thank you very much, everyone. All right, Tony, this morning session, thank you. Yeah.
This concludes the public hearing for February ninth, twenty twenty-one, ten A M. session. So we're gonna resume a little, I guess, we're gonna take a break.
Yeah, so apologies to everyone who's called in, who have called in for the two P M. session, but we just finished the ten A M. session. So given the commissioners have been at this kind of without a break for many, many hours, we're going to take a thirty-minute break back at three fifteen to begin the two P M. session. Apologies to commissioners.
Review session, yeah.
Yeah, the review session. Apologies to commissioners, staff, and applicants, okay? Thanks, see you in thirty minutes. Okay. Bye. Okay, bye.
I think we have to come back, everybody back to the table.
I'm here, I'm here.
Okay. I see Commissioner Otley Brown, Shaveta. And she, okay, we have everybody.
Start or?
Yeah. Sorry, I'm trying to scramble with some things.
Do you want to wait? Just to wait?
No, because we can't. Okay, so let's get started. Everyone ready?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Am I on?
Yeah, we're going, we're on.
Orders.
What happened?
Oh, this review session, sorry, throw me for a second, sorry about that. Good afternoon, this is the Board of Standards and Appeals Review Session for February 9th, 2021, 2:00 PM session, no public testimony during the review session. First item up is new case 27, item number 27, 2020-48 BZ 237-241 East 86th Street, Manhattan.
Okay, giving this to Vice Chair Shonda.
Thank you. So we have received the proof of service on the initial application and also proof of hearing of notice to officials and community boards. There was also photographs provided indicating that the hearing notices were, hearing notice was posted in the lobby of the building. We have a community board approval and also have a letter of support from local council member Kalos. DOI had no issues and FDNY also issued no objection to this project. This is a new PCE Barry's Boot Camp that is being proposed to be located in a portion of a cellar of an existing 18-story mixed-use residential and commercial building. This would be located in the cellar and the access to the cellar from the ground floor will be by an exclusive elevator, an elevator that is exclusive to this PCE. No massage services proposed. The applicant has provided quite a detailed sound mitigation plan and it is keyed in to the floor plan. I had a couple of comments and one was that in the submission package, I looked through it again last evening, I did not see the sign analysis and the zoning analysis chart. It was not included in the last submission set that I collected last night. So maybe it's missing from the, in our share folder, but it might be there in the submission documents. And also since this is a proposed PCE, there should be a note, and this is probably something we should standardize, a note saying that, that whatever noise, whatever sound system that is going to be provided onsite would be monitored through a sound limiter. I had no other comments. Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Right, so I just want to say that there is a signage calculation chart on the drawings, that should be enough. I mean, I personally like those BSA forms because they don't allow for you to be a little sort of more descriptive in your own calculations, so it shows on the drawing, so.
Yeah, I was fine with that, it's just I don't know whether as a standard, as a requirement, whether we do it, I'm fine otherwise.
Okay, I didn't have any other comments, I mean, it's in a residential building, but the acoustical efforts look acceptable, I mean, you know, we never know until this complaint is solved. Okay, go ahead, so Commissioner Otley Brown.
I have no comments.
Commissioner Shaveta?
Nothing additional from me, thank you.
Commissioner Shaveta?
I have nothing additional to add.
Okay, right, that's fine.
Item number 28, 2020-30BZ, 37-40, 31st Street, Queens, this is also a PCE, it's a CrossFit.
Okay, we have proof of service on the initial application and also a hearing notice to officials and community board. The applicant did post notices outside the building. We do have a community board approval. I did not see on the, in our submission documents, a DOI notice, but do have FDNY's letter, FDNY has no objection. This is a one-story non-residential building located at a corner and it's, PC is going to occupy substantial portion of this one-story manufacturing building with additional occupants being other light industrial uses like this, I think the abutting neighbor is a laundry supply company. But based on the photos provided, it seems there is also a pharmacy that is part of this building, based on at least photographs provided. The statement of fact did not say anything, maybe the pharmacy is no longer in operation, so if the applicant could clarify that. This is a legalization of an existing PCE. The PCE had opened on September 1st, 2017 and this is all a one-story ground floor, so accessibility, they seem to meet. And in the signage analysis, in the drawings that's been provided, in that drawing analysis, the applicant has included signs other than signs that are not related to PCEs. The applicant should remove those from the analysis, just include the PCE-related signs in the drawings. There's no reason for us to encumber any other changes that may happen with other uses.
I just want to jump in, there is a DOI, it's just not in the place where you expect, it's in the general.
Okay, all right, and there is no issue with that, right? Thank you.
Different than at normal, but that's because everything's different these days, coming from people's houses, things like that.
Okay, the applicant has provided interior photos also and I did not see any music system mounted on the wall, so I don't know if there is any live, any music that is played and therefore the question of sound limiter and all of that. I don't know whether it's relevant or not. Those are my comments, Madam Chair.
Okay, so I don't, I mean, this is, it seems that for these CrossFits, the only viable. the only viable location for them are these independent kind of one-story warehouse-y or manufacturing-type buildings where you don't have any neighbors to like rattle in the morning. So other than, it doesn't look like from the plans that there is actually a pharmacy, so, or if there is, well, you don't know whether they're rattling the bottles off the shelves, right? Right. So anyway, maybe they could comment on that. And other than that, they also have their signed schedule on, on the drawings. Yeah, oh, I otherwise don't have any comments mostly because it's a freestanding building. Okay, so Commissioner Otley Brown?
I have no comments.
Commissioner Shaveta?
Nothing significant, the only thing is, I believe in the statement of facts, it says the premises and then comma, a garage. My understanding is the, what they mean is it was originally used as a garage, maybe? It's a garage-style building, but the way it's written, it gives the impression that the premise is going to be used as a garage. So I just want to mention that and our understanding, or at least my understanding, there is no garage over there anymore. Just wanted to mention that.
Well, we don't know how that other space that they say is not subject to the application, we don't know how that other space is being used.
I believe they said it's a factory or so.
Right, the other one is a warehouse, it's a factory for laundry supply.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay, Commissioner Shaveta?
I have nothing to add on this one.
All right.
Item number 29, 2020-37BZ, 217 Seventh Avenue, Manhattan. This is also a PCE, it's a mind-body project.
We have proof of service on the initial, initial application and also proof of hearing notice to officials and community board. We have a community board approval letter, DOI issue, had no issues, FDNY also had no objection. The, I, this is a proposed PCE, it's a yoga studio, proposed yoga studio that would be located on a portion of a one-story, that would be located on the first floor. This is a full-block residential development that abouts the number seven, actually that abouts, I think, the number one train line. And on the ground floor, there are several commercial uses and the residential is located above floors one to, two to six, I think. And so I think, given that this is a proposed yoga studio, they provided all the necessary documents, I don't expect there to be much of a noise issue, but any comments, Madam Chair?
They also show acoustical separation, they show how the pipe will be isolated, which is important. Often we're sound leaks, so actually they provided quite a lot, you know, there's a lot of different interpretations on whether yoga studios are noisy or not. Sometimes we see them more acoustically separated than like the spin studio, which is actually.
I think they want to be separated from the others.
No, but there's also the idea of chanting and, you know, those kinds of things that can be some noise that communicates, but they, but they show acoustical separation, so, yeah. Look at this. Commissioner Otley Brown?
I have no comments.
Okay, Commissioner Shaveta?
I'm not sure if I have seen the DOI.
Yeah, there is, yeah, there is a DOI.
Oh, there is, okay, maybe I didn't see it. Other than that, nothing.
Okay, great. Commissioner Shaveta?
I really feel this is a thorough application and I'm satisfied with it.
I don't know, oh, sorry. Item number 30, 2020-41BZ, 107-02, Queens Boulevard, Queens. This is also a special permit for a PCE, a Planet Fitness.
We have proof of service on the initial application and proof of hearing notice, notices to officials and community board. Community board voted to approve the project. We do have communication from DOI, no issues on that, and FDNY also has issued no objection. This is a proposed PCE that will occupy a proposed construction, new construction. The proposed PC will occupy the cellar of this new building. This new construction will be a 10-story building with ground floor commercial with parking above the first floor and then the residential. So the PCE will be in the cellar, there's the ground floor commercial above that parking and then the residential above. The applicant has provided the, all the documents to this, this is, they're proposing, by the way, they're proposing a 24/7 facility. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. Again, also on this one, zoning analysis and sign analysis chart was not included, but it was there in the documents. And since it is a proposed one, a note should be added to the plan saying that a sound will be, there'll be a limiter provided.
Yeah, okay. I'm just looking at the, it's in the cellar with locker, let me see. With parking above and, yeah, so it's separated very far away from the residential by parking, right?
Yes.
But we, it's true, we don't see any acoustic, let's see.
Yeah, there is not much of an acoustical detail, but the argument in the statement of facts, they have stated is that they'll provide nine-millimeter-thick rubber flooring and over a 10-inch-thick slab. That's the extent of the information that's been provided, but nothing in the drawings.
Right, so, okay, that's something that probably we should talk about because I, again, I don't know, you know, our experience with annoying PCs has been in construction, right? So I don't know that new construction automatically addresses this issue. Yeah, that's, this is the part where I'm, I'm not up to speed on this, okay? All right, so we'll add additional acoustical efforts. Commissioner Otley Brown?
I have no comments.
Commissioner Shaveta?
I, I thought that the Vice Chair mentioned that it's going to be in the cellar, I believe it's going to be in the cellar and on the first floor as well. The statement of facts, this is, this is Queens Boulevard, right? I'm not sleeping, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe the statement of facts mentioned, this is page two, on the, under proposed conditions, it says the proposed PCE will be, will have 560 square feet of floor area on portion of the first floor and 15, 232 in the cellar, so it's going to have some, some space in the first floor.
It's just a lobby, it's just an entry condition where you show your ID card and then you go down.
Yes, I understand, but I just wanted to mention that it's going to be partially on the cellar. I understand that the main, the main trunk will be downstairs, but it's going to be, it's going to be some, some space on the first floor as well. That, that building is under construction and, and like we mentioned before, vibrations could travel through structural elements. So if they can provide us with, like us are dead, with a letter from their structural engineer saying that vibrations are taken into account and they are not going to be traveling upstairs to the, whatever use upstairs, that would be helpful, that's all.
Yeah, so thank you. I just want to add, I don't really get how the, maybe that's, the drawings are so light, I don't really see how the elevator, it's like almost ghosted, I'd see a little.
So, yeah, in the, if you go to first floor plan and I think it's been hashed out, which it shouldn't have been, A101, it says elevator E3.
Oh, okay, so I'm looking at the finished plan, maybe I shouldn't be doing that, okay.
A101.
Right, okay.
Point oh one.
Yeah, okay.
So it's been, I don't know why it's been hatched, but.
It's hatched and it's also, the line weight for the walls of the elevator are really, really thin. Okay, so I see it now, okay, thanks. Okay, Commissioner Shaveta?
I have nothing, nothing further from me, Chair.
Okay, I also, excuse me, Chair, I didn't find the type-two checklist in the file, so if they could submit that, I only saw the addendum to the checklist.
Okay. All right. Okay, next, move on?
Yeah.
I'm just taking those separation, yeah, okay, all right.
Item number 31, 2020-42BZ, 155 Gerard Street, Brooklyn. This is social permit for single-family home enlargement.
Um, so we have proof of service of initial application to officials and of notice of hearing to officials and neighbors. The community board recommends approval. We have one letter in support and one from an immediate neighbor in opposition citing obstruction of views and light. As a threshold question, there is an assumption that the rear yard obstruction that reduces the rear yard to 15 feet is legal, non-compliant, but the Sanborn maps that were provided from 1950 shows nothing at the rear yard and then the addition doesn't appear until the Sanborn map that was provided in 1966. So either you produce a 1961 Sanborn map or there is no proof that it's an existing condition unless you have something else. Pre-existing condition. So if you can establish that non-compliance, then the retention of existing walls calculations has to change and will probably not hit the 50% of, as now proposed. The site is also in an AE12 flood zone, so we need, as is standard, a ZRD1 and a CCD1 from DOB confirming compliance with Appendix G and related building codes. The architect claims in the drawings that this addition to the existing building is not a substantial improvement as that term is defined in zoning regulations. Hence not subject to Appendix G, but DOB's is the one that verifies that assumption, we never do that analysis. And that's a, just a note to our project managers, if you see a site, proposed project in a flood zone, it has to go to DOB for a ZRD1 or a CCD1. Before it comes to us even, it would be, it's, it's a faster process if it goes to them first. Um, sorry, they need to provide legends on all of the drawings so that we can tell which ones, what the solid versus the open walls versus hatch lines mean and so on. I was taking, making assumptions of what I was looking at, but I don't know because there's, was only a, there was only a legend on maybe one drawing and I don't know if it's the same legend on every drawing. On the perimeter walls to remain diagrams, you need to dimension each wall portion and then show your addition, show 10 foot three plus five foot six plus so-and-so. Show all the calculations, all the additions. The drawings appear to show complete reconstruction of perimeter walls to be retained. Only 52 feet on the first floor are not being rebuilt according to the actual drawings. That's 25%, not anywhere near 50%. That's also the case on the second floor. So you cannot say you retain the walls and then take them down because, yeah, because that's not retention of the existing walls. So it also looks like all of the joists at the second floor are being replaced based on the drawings. If your section wants to be showing some retention and some new, then you have to show a section through that. So I'd have to say that it's a little premature to be reviewing this case because we haven't established retention of 50% of the existing floor area via perimeter walls and floor joists. So, you know, whether or not they add, and since we don't know if that rear yard addition, that rear yard extension is a legal, non-compliant condition, we don't know actually what the base house looks like, so I don't think we have to get into any more about the design of the building yet. It's too early. So I give it to Vice Chair Shonda.
In that case, I have no additional comments.
Okay. Commissioner Otley Brown?
I agree with everything you said, Chair.
Commissioner Shaveta?
Nothing further from me, thank you.
And Commissioner Shaveta?
I agree with your statements, Chair, and nothing further from me.
Okay, all right.
Next item, final item is 32, 2020-45BC and 127-15BC. This is 135-35 Northern Boulevard, Queens, CRKO.
Very long story that this building, we have proof of service of initial application to officials and of notice of hearing to officials and neighbors on both applications for the 7366 and for the variance application. This is actually two applications for the same project, the first is the variance and the second is the 7366 height special permit near the airport approach. I think going forward, they should be separated because really they're asked, the findings are very different and it's kind of hard to discuss it in tandem. So they, they're originally listed separately, but we combine them kind of by mistake now and there. So going forward, they'll be handled separately. To that point, the community board, and so the community board recognized that as well. The community board recommends denial of the variance with one in favor of the variance and one abstention and approval of the 7366 special permit with five opposed and one abstention. So they're recognizing there's a kind of, there are different kinds of issues at play here. The community board report provides a very helpful summary of the BSA history at the site. It opposes the use of the building as a hotel because there are already 15 hotels in the area with concern about traffic impacts. They also oppose the dramatic increase in the size of the community facility space, which is no longer designated as a senior center, which had been in some iterations in the past. And I add, could easily be ambulatory care, which is what is analyzed with even more traffic impacts. They object to the basement being used as retail with traffic generation. We need verification from the Department of Buildings that the use as a hotel is actually as of right in this portion of the C22, and that wasn't discussed at all, I was surprised to find that in the statement of facts because when you read where hotels are permitted, because they've become more and more restricted in recent years by city planning. Hotels in C22s are restricted by location to within 1,000 feet of the entrance exit to a limited-access highway or expressway, which prohibits direct vehicular access to a budding land. So I'm not going to opine on whether they meet that finding, maybe they do, maybe they don't. DOB needs to opine on whether the Northern Boulevard approach to the Van Wijk Expressway at this point qualifies for, for this use. It may, it might not, I don't. This is a new variance application, so we must go through all of the findings from the beginning. And Commissioner Otley Brown has been reviewing this project for, feels like, a portion of her life. So I'm sorry to say, you're going to have to keep, keep looking. In 2005, this board may have asked the same questions we will ask today, but then the requested waivers are also different today, so here we go. The statement of fact states that the theater building is obsolete for use as a theater, but doesn't explain why other than to quote from the 2005 resolution. It should instead provide more detail on that, even if it is a resubmission of the argument to that point made in 2005. I understand, however, that pursuant to the terms of the original variance and the obligations to the Landmarks Commission, the theater. the theater's elaborate plaster embellishments have already been removed off-site for restoration. And we can see, um, and I note that Commissioner Sheta went on a site visit um, this weekend, I think, and, uh, took interior photos. So we can see the level of demolition inside the building. Um. Um, also, according to the period drawings, the original theater orchestra extended approximately two hundred feet into the site, which is consistent with the designation diagram in the designation report, whereas the area to be retained is only about eighty feet. Um, they, uh, they should provide a drawing that shows what portion of the original theater is being retained and explain about how that came to be the, a portion agreed upon by L P C. And so the little bit of that story is L P C, um, had designated the entire theater portion and then city council, um, kind of partially undid the designation and reduced the, the amount of the area that would be, um, an interior landmark. But there was no information on that in the statement of facts. And so they really should add that because I, I actually got lost when they sent us those, um, um, those historical drawings. Then I'm like, well, wait a minute, you demolished the entire orchestra. I don't get it. So that's why. Um, admittedly, the restoration program in the Evergreen submission is astonishing and impressive. And the end results will surely be spectacular and costly. And if you looked at those drawings, there's just so many, many detailed drawings, one after the next after the next, and then we see the photographs of the, of Evergreen actually in their workshops doing the restoration work, the painstaking amount of work. Um, I just want to verify that the six to eight million dollars, and eight million is including soft costs, um, which are called premium costs, are exclusively for the restoration of the theater and do not include the steel beams and underpinning that's described in the engineer's report. I, I just wasn't clear where the beams, the sort of the trusses are fitting into this. Um, the statement of facts states that because the site is deep, but the frontage on Northern Boulevard is only a hundred sixty feet with sixty-six feet of that frontage occupied by the theater, the majority of the addition has to be located over the theater. I don't know what they mean by that because the construction is performed on deep thirty-five to fifty-foot wide sites all the time. And the drawings, as I'll mention later, don't bear this out. I think that statement is a remnant from an old application that got carried in because actually, most of the building is not sitting on top of the theater. It's sitting behind it. Um, and that was commentary actually from one of the many prior board analyses of a variance application. The board asked, why don't you move the building back away from the theater? Uh, and in this case, the building is moved back away from the theater. If I understand correctly, the landmark portion is only at the front ninety feet of the site, not at the rear. And the new development covers the entirety of the site, not just the portion over the landmark and only, only some of it is over the landmark. Most certainly, excavators and cranes are making their way to the back of the site. So the statement that the theater prevents development at the rear is not accurate. It's just not accurate. Um, unless really, I'm not understanding what the statement was meaning to, what sort of concept that statement was meaning to convey. The letter from the engineer states that a fifty-five by eighty, quote, structural box, unquote, will be constructed around the landmark. But other than that's, then, other than that, the statement had, that principal mass of the building is over the landmark is not correct. It isn't. Um, I'd like to know whether the structural box has been constructed. Um, they need to provide photos of the excavation site and the box. So we did get some photos from Commissioner Sheta's, um, site visit, but they need to provide photos of the structural box if it's been constructed. And since it appears from the sections that the roof of the theater is being kept clear of structure and holding up a rooftop terrace only, then I ask, what's the reason for the very large double T concrete beam or sectional steel beam? Is it holding up just the residential garden? Or is it holding up the, the dome of the theater? Is the theater hanging from that? The theater dome hanging from it? I don't know. I didn't understand why there was such a gigantic structural T. When we, when we saw this at the last version, when they came for an extension where it had been, um, I M Pay Architects um, had had a project where a lot of the building was sitting on top of the theater. They had this enormous structural member, which they showed us a lot about. There were videos. There was a lot of information about it to carry the weight of this, this very tall building that was on top of it. But now all I see is the garden, so I don't really understand what, what's going on there. Um, and since it appears also, I'm sorry. And if underpinning the structural box to create a cellar around it is a logistical cost prohibitive pursuit, then why not avoid the cellar entirely at that point and provide one further back into the site? So I absolutely don't understand why you take a landmark that's so fragile. And I can't even believe that the landmarks commission would let you do it. Cause by the way, that's one of the things they look at. They look at, is your, your work going to undermine the integrity of the landmark? They'll do that even if it's a, an essentially an exterior designation. If the work on the interior is going to undermine the exterior, they say no. So I do not get why you need to put a cellar underneath this landmark. It makes zero sense to me. And I'm curious whether the landmarks commission is aware that this is happening. This is proposed. Um, and then, uh, there's also a statement in the same paragraph that the pre-cast double Ts may, quote, require a larger capacity crane than is typically required for a residential concrete structure. Um, there's words to that effect also in the engineer's letter. But the proposal is for a mixed-use commercial hotel, community facility and residential structure. So I'm really not understanding the statement. It's not a typical residential structure. It's this structure that has all of these other things in it. So why a larger capacity crane? I, I don't understand the distinction being made. Maybe, um, Commissioner Sheta can help me, enlighten me, or the applicant actually should be doing that. I also didn't understand the, quote, logistical complexity of combining trades if steel beams are used. All jobs require logistical con- coordination among the trades. I really didn't understand that. You need to wait for the electrician to get there before you can close the walls or the plumber or whatever. You're always coordinating the trades. And how is it, um, quote, protecting the interior landmark? It stated it's at page seven of the statement of facts. If the space is left open to the sky for months and perhaps years, that's another part I really don't understand. So I do, I do get that all the plaster's been removed and that now the superstructure that held the plaster in place is apparently just open to the elements. It snowed a few times in the last little while. And, um, all of that is corrosive, so why would it be left open to the sky as was stated? I didn't get that. Um, why is the project being designed to two thousand and eight building code? If permits have not been obtained for the building under that code? Or, or maybe they have? Um, is this project as proposed being filed as an amendment to the two thousand and fifteen permitted project? In which case, I guess they sort of vest under the old building code, let's say the two thousand and eight code. Um, also, what would the percentage of open space be if measured above the height of the theater's roof? So the theater is higher than twenty-three feet, but if you treated the sort of the platform of the theater as grade, what would be the percentage of open space, um, left over from the coverage of this, the apartment building that's added to it, the hotel apartment building? Why, and my question is, why can't the building conform to open space ratio requirements above the roof? Um, I believe that is from the fifth floor, which is elevation seventy-one and up. And what would be the as-of-right analysis for an addition to an existing legal non-compliant structure? Because that's the other thing. You've got an existing theater that come, that occupies the entire site. So had you just added to the existing theater, you would have had an existing non-compliant condition and then you add to it. What would have been the as-of-right addition to that? Um, so I would like to actually see that. Um, and then, uh, sorry. On the as-of-right, I ask, why isn't the project developed to the full four-point-eight F A R potential? It seems to be, I think it's like four-point-two. On the as-of-right's annualized loss, and I'm never going to get a lot into the subjects of financials because it's not my specialty, but on the annualized loss of one-point-six million in the as-of-right, it seems that the scale of a minimum variance would only need to overcome that amount, one-point-six million, um, by some relatively small amount as opposed to overcoming the eight million premium costs for, um, protecting the landmark. Recently, we've been seeing proposed variance projects satisfied with tiny returns of like one percent. So that, which has confused me frankly. Um, this one has a five and a half percent return. Um, so I'd like to understand, um, sort of the spread on this, like why? And, and also, it sounds like even though you've got eight million dollars in premium costs for the landmark, the as-of-right is almost getting you a return because you're, you're falling short by only a million six as opposed to like seven million or something. That, that surprised me. So, um, and then I'd like to understand, what are the potential sites for transfer of the, the, the development rights on, for a landmark? Um, and, and that's the question. I'm not really even sure whether, um, an interior landmark is considered a landmark that qualifies under, um, section seventy-four seventy-nine for transfer of development rights, like across the street. Um, but, but there are, there is value in those development rights. And that was something that was actually not considered in the as-of-right. So that actually, I think, needs to be considered. And, and that's actually something, um, you know, many years later, when they come back to us and they say, uh, we want to merge with another zoning lot and we say, what about your excess development rights? Um, that's would have been the case for an as-of-right condition. Or if I, maybe I didn't make sense when I just said that, but anyway. Since, um, no specific tenant for the community facility has been determined, the parking analysis properly assumes the high turnover ambulatory care use. So that's good that they use that. I again, um, want to make, oh, so then I look at the parking garage. And again, fearful of the integrity of the landmark. I also don't believe that the landmarks commission is aware that all the vehicles heading into the parking garage, including trucks that head to loading docks, will be passing along the wall of the landmark structure. Um, and the wall of the theater that has been completely excavated underneath and all the vibration issues related to that. So, um, that was not the case in the prior submissions, in the prior versions. In that case, the, the, uh, driveway swung all the way against the property line, not next to the landmark theater. That seems like a terrible idea in terms of the integrity of the landmark. Um, also, um, how does the so-called residential garden at the fifth floor work? If it's adjacent to hotel rooms? I really didn't understand that. So, um, you're in a hotel room, you're looking into the residential garden. Looks like, and, and if I'm in the residential area, I have to sort of go through the hotel or something like that in order to get to what really is a garden for permanent residents and not to mingle with, out with strangers essentially. Um, I'm also not understanding, and I'm sorry, this is a complicated project. It's, you know, um, uh, I'm not understanding the sequence from sidewalk to the hotel upper levels. There appears to be only one elevator surrounded by some kind of odd ramp that gets you to a hundred sixty-two room hotel, hundred sixty-two key hotel. Otherwise, the elevators are in the middle of the parking garage, so it assumes basically no pedestrians. Um, frankly, I have to say this, the two thousand and fifteen proposal that we saw had a much better entry condition, both for the parking, protection of the landmark in terms of the trucks passing by and access to the different uses in the building. It was just a, frankly, just a better building. Um, and, um, I'd like them pleased to provide more information about why the required street trees can't be provided on-site. No good excuse for that. The, there's this stove and tech rain screen detail that I found on their website, which looks and smells very much like the evil Ephesus. Um, and it's not an acceptable material at the Board of Standards and Appeal, so use something else. Um, and this is a very big building in the neighborhood. They have to provide renderings from all street views and bird size views. I note there is one rendering in the E A S. We should have received that rendering also in the application materials for the, the variance. Um, and also, uh, I wonder, there's a, a lot of exposed concrete on this project, exposed in the facade. So I'd like to know how that would be treated so as not to appear disagreeable because, um, there's a lot of really badly handled concrete in New York City and we don't want this building to be an eyesore. So, you know, Tadeo Ando is one thing, is that who's a famous Japanese architect who specializes in exposed concrete. But I'm just taking a wild guess. This is not being handled with the same level of detail as Tadeo Ando's projects. Um, just a little bit, no, I'm sorry. I still have a lot more. Bear with me. The project appears with respect to massing and finishes very similar to the project across the street on Northern Boulevard as depicted in photo seven. Um, so that gives me pause because it's not a very attractive building. What about street wall continuity also on the Farrington side? Only a one-story structure for egress is proposed. That will be a dead facade and so on, and not an asset to the streetscape that typically has two to four-story structures with ground floor retail. Um, you, you know, we worked on a hospital on Fourteenth Street last year, I guess. Um, and they also had kind of this skinny access point, um, coming from Fourteenth Street. And the bulk of the hospital is on Thirteenth Street. But their little skinny access point on Fourteenth Street, which was really just a mechanical building, was handled like a very beautiful structure, even though all it was was a mechanical box. And so here, where it's not, where this is a for-profit institution, you're treating this like, uh, this is an alley. So, um, I didn't understand that. It's ruining the street wall continuity. And finally, I'm trying to figure out from other than the financial analysis, how the proposed is the minimum variance. The F A R is nearly twice the allowable, and there are many other waivers that may not be absolutely necessary. The explanation chart for each wa- waiver doesn't really reflect the project. For example, it states the site is narrow. It isn't narrow. It states that there must be construction over the landmark. Why? It states that the only way to provide required open space is on the roof of the hotel and community facility. Why? And why doesn't that comply? Assuming the as-of-right is correct, the open space is on the fifth floor roof. Why can't the same be done for the proposed, similar to a tower on a base solution with a bigger floor plate? Um, why can't the commercial portion meet the twenty-foot rear yard requirements? The two thousand and five approval had all of the parking below grade accessed by elevator rather than a ramp, and there was no rear yard waiver. The two thousand and fifteen version had above-grade-only parking and also didn't require rear yard waivers. So you're adding more waivers when they didn't seem to be necessary before. I don't know why. And given the dearth of nearby public parks, which is an important consideration, the nearest of which, um, is an island in the middle of the eight lanes of Northern Boulevard, which is really hardly a park. Um, and the fact that the area is underserved compared to citywide goals for open space, onsite open space would meet a critical need and should be provided. Um, I need more on all of these issues and I'm not convinced, given the site's variance history, that the scope of waivers can't be reduced. As to the effect of height on open space, the shadow study should show what an as-of-right building would do. the shadow study should show what an as of right building would do with respect to the sensitive receptor parks, you're right across from a park. Um, they should provide recent site photos. The ones we have are from February twenty twenty. There's a typo on page two. Frontage is either a hundred sixty feet or a hundred fifty eight feet. So that's typo. There is a two thousand five environmental hazmat restrictive declaration. I'd like to know what the status of compliance is because demo is already started. The E A S is missing the study on historic and cultural resources, which is odd because of course this is a landmark. Um, we will submit the E A S to D E P, D O T and parks, but there should also be information as requested by the community board about the effect on pedestrians and traffics of the hotel and medical office and parking garage access at the curb cut. I also don't think their level of service analysis for vehicular traffic was divided.
Um, Chair, I have an update on that. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, yesterday we received the informal submission of the traffic and pedestrian data that was pending for the proposed project. Um, we're informed that they believe there will be, uh, limited impacts and that the impacts at two intersections could be, um, um, mitigated by project improvement measures, uh, including signal timing. So that will be a formal submission, uh, after the hearing. It was, I believe it was just completed.
Thank you.
And the applicant can add anything else they want to say to that. Um, I didn't see a revised transportation section based on this data, just backup data. So I would like to know if, if that will be forthcoming.
Okay, great. And then I'm just going to jump to the special permit. I just have a couple of comments on that. With respect to the special permit, we have the FAA and Port Authority letters and the F A plus A report, that's the consultant's report. I think we should get closer with our variance analysis before we dig any deeper into the height waiver, since the review may result in a shorter building. But I would like to understand why the bulkhead in the proposed, um, is so much higher than in the two thousand five approval. It's seventeen feet in this one and nine feet in the earlier proposal. And elevations and sections that are submitted with respect to the special permit have to show the rooftop and bulkhead warning lights located below the maximum FAA permitted height as well as all of the points described in the FAA determination. So the determination at four or five points, it has to show all of those and show the points and permitted elevations on the roof plan as well. Apologies to everybody for that being way too long. Okay, um, vice chair Shonda.
Okay. So, um, with regards to this revised proposal, I think, uh, I'll start off with what I think is the easier one. The statement of find, uh, statement of findings and facts, uh, needs to be rewritten because it really needs to pick up on each one of the waivers and indicate clearly why, especially in light of the fact that we had approved a prob, uh, board had approved a project previously. And each time I was reviewing it, I felt I needed to know why this was needed and why that was not working. What, what was the need for the change and, and why this change is better? And therefore, um, better or needed, um, and, and therefore the waiver was required and how the waiver cannot be overlooked. Uh, without the waiver, what would happen? I think that's the extent of the clarity that I was looking for throughout the document as I was reviewing the document. Um, I, you know, I don't want to go into which design is better than the other. I personally, I actually like this layout better. Uh, for the reason is that it seemed like the structure of the building, most of the structure of the building was off the landmark, interior landmark structure. Most of it was, um, before it was like a, it was an H shaped, uh, the I beam kind of thing where a bulk of the building was right in the middle with a portion of it landing right on the landmark, uh, uh, interior with two wings extending out of it. Um, this one seems to have most of its building around it, um, rather than on it. So with that in mind, I, my question was, wouldn't that make the cost of construction a little bit better? Your, 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 most of your development is around the interior landmark. And that, yes, you would still need to shore up the building and other things that would be required. And I, I don't have the expertise on it, but the amount of construction penetration or, or structural stability, uh, that one would need or foundation or base that one would need for a building that is sitting on top of the landmark as opposed to around it should be easier. Uh, and, um, and, and, and why then the, why then that is becoming more difficult to build? And, uh, and again, some of the questions that you raised, uh, I would like more clarity uh, as to why, uh, the site is limiting? Because you also have the Farrington ex, uh, uh, accessway. Um, one doesn't always have to use the Northern Boulevard entryway to enter the site. Farrington is also another point of entry to the site. That was no, never mentioned throughout the document as to why couldn't that be used also for, uh, construction, uh, uh, accessways and staging area and such. Um, and, uh, also the same question I had regarding the two crane thing. So, um, definitely it would be helpful if, if, uh, the applicant can, can clarify the construction restrictions that this project imposes now. I'm assuming it was there before too. So why now it's becoming more of an imposition and not before? What is the difference? And is it because of the, the way that it's been constructed? I noticed that they're providing more parking spaces, uh, than the previous project. And, and that is required, um, which is, I think in this neighborhood and knowing this community board, uh, that's a welcome. But is that adding to the, the construction complexity therebo, and therefore? Yeah, and, um, and can it not be done in stages, uh, where, uh, you can, um, and would that add to the cost, complexity or such? Has not been clarified. Um, what was the other question I had? And, um, I actually like the interior circulation that has been proposed, which I feel provides much more of a vehicular staging area within the building and, and reduces the amount of vehicles trying to get into the site. The previous project had like the driveway and the ramp, which was acting as the waiting area and the, almost like there is a, um, to get in. And it was a one-way thing, whereas this proposal, the circulation, um, of vehicle, uh, vehicular movement within the building, I thought was better. And I thought the placement of the loading berth in the proposed one was better because it was not immediately into the landmark, uh, grand foyer. It was away from it. Uh, it was against the, it was closer to the Farrington, uh, site. So I thought that was a better solution. And also the trash room, which would be a compactor with all the goods coming down from above, um, is also not located next to the landmark building. It is now away. So those things from, uh, from the, as you said, the fragility of the, of this development, I felt these are like constant vibrating noise sound, uh, source that can have an impact are away from the structure. And, uh, and the circulation was a lot clearer with separate entrances for the residential, separate entrance for the commercial, separate for the hotel, and with each having its separate drop-off area. So I like that circulation, but I had a lot of questions with regards to the construction and how the construction, um, in this case, is, is it easier, better? What is causing it? What is driving it? And, 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 and is there an alternative? Or is it being driven by the proposed project? If it is being driven by the proposed project, which is causing to the cost, what is an alternative? I did not have issue with the hotel because the Northern Boulevard ramp, um, that exits from the Van Wyck, it ends exactly at the intersection of Prince Street. Prince Street is located within, um, that intersection of Northern and Prince Street is within thousand feet of the, of the Archeo Key, so Ar- Arche Theater, Archeo Theater. So I, based on the definition, uh, of the use group, um, I thought that would be acceptable. Um, because Northern Boulevard is a, again, a major arterial and it is also providing an exit ramp to Van Wyck and White Stone Expressway both. Um, so I didn't question it. I think the use, if anywhere, if there's going to be a hotel, this is probably a better location because you're right off the highway and, um, and you're in and out and providing that much amount of parking in this area is good because you're taking away the parking load from the abutting streets. And there are municipal parking lots in this area are always fully occupied. So providing that is good, which is also, uh, which also adds to the fact that it's a revenue generator. So, um, so I don't know how that is being affected into the cost. And also I had the same question with regards to the, if the interior, uh, is a designated, as a designated landmark can transfer air right, it should have been calculated in the as of right, uh, analysis, and I'm not sure if it was. Um, yeah, those, those are my immediate comments as, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Lee Brown.
So as before, when I heard this, I found the uniqueness finding to be persuasive and I still feel like that. Um, I'm looking at the project's financials and I have a few questions right now, but reserve the right to ask more as the case goes on and the development costs might actually change, which would bring up more questions. But right now, my biggest issue at the moment has to do with the minimal variance question, given that the applicant used a cap rate of six for both the as of right as well as the proposed. And I actually was doing some reading on the internet and found a number of sources that quoted Queens multi-family residential cap rates as low as five point three seven in the borough, actually in the borough of Queens. And so if you were to adjust the cap rate down, you actually would create an extra fifteen million dollars in value for the as of right, which would produce a ten million dollar profit overall, but, uh, seven point six, uh, seven point one six percent overall profit, which annualized becomes two point three percent because it's a three-year project. But if you do the same thing to the proposed, it actually creates an additional twenty one million dollars in value over the initial sixty five million dollar estimation, which brings the overall profit up to eighty six million, which is twenty nine percent overall and seven point two five percent annually. And so my question is, why a six percent cap rate? When using a cap rate suggested on the internet through a few different articles, would that you a five point three seven cap rate, which would show that this proposed project is definitely an over ask? So that's my first question and I would expect, I don't expect this to be answered at the hearing, but I would like to see a written justification as for why they chose six, given that publications have suggested it should be lower. Now, um, I only have two other issues that I wanted to raise. One was the residential sales prices. Just like in the other case, there were four separate analyses of sales prices of units and average price per square foot for studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms and three bedrooms were listed. However, when you look at the stacking plan and you add up everything, the average price per square foot for the as of right as well as for the proposed is way lower than all of the different numbers of, um, averages that you get from looking at the comparables. So I'm wondering why? And why not just use the average that's suggested for each type of apartment? Then, um, multiply it by the, the number of apartments in each apartment type and add it up that way instead of going to a stacking plan? Because I think the stacking plan is dampening the amount of income and you can get more if you just stick with your averages. Then I had another question about the hotel occupancy and room rates that were based on Smith Travel Research. The information they got actually goes up to the first half of twenty eighteen. And the first half of twenty eighteen suggests an average occupancy of ninety one point eight percent and average daily rate of a hundred and sixty five dollars and thirty one cents. So then how do they justify using a seventy eight percent average occupancy for twenty twenty two and two hundred and fifty dollars, um, a- average daily rate? And they need to give me more backup information for why they took a step back for twenty eighteen? Because I know they could say that COVID, you know, seriously affected the hotel. But in order to make that argument, you have to bring your income and your aver, your occupancy rates up to twenty twenty to show what the fall off is. And they don't, they stop at twenty eighteen. So I'm wondering what other, um, impacts there were that would dampen those occupancy rates? And at the moment, that's all I have. The rest would probably be cost-related questions and how it affects the pro forma.
Okay, thank you. I'm just a question, you said, what, what did you say the daily rate was that they used? You're muted, you're muted, you're muted.
They used a hundred and sixty five dollars. And while that's actually, I mean, they used two hundred and fifty dollars. And while that's actually higher than what was in the first half of twenty eighteen, the occupancy rate has gone down by over fifteen percent from ninety one point eight percent in the first half of twenty eighteen to the number they're using, seventy eight percent. And I, I raised that because seventy eight percent forms their baseline and they grow from there. So when they get to their stabilized year, they're at eighty two percent, which is also lower than what you had in the first half of twenty eighteen. So they have to show us what's actually impacting that.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. And, uh, please bear with me. Uh, I want to start by saying that, yes, it's a, it's a really complicated project. Uh, the way it's designed made it complicated. Uh, but, uh, and I, I, I still recall that when this project was before us for extension, I believe, back in twenty nineteen, I, 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 I recall that I, I wanted to like pursue some discussions and you chaired told me that, uh, they are, they have a landmark and it's a longer story and it's a complicated project. So I recall that one of the members of the board described this project as complicated, but I just want to say that complicated doesn't mean expensive, in engineering at least. You could have a really cheap project, but it's very complicated to build. And you might have like a massive project, but it's not complicated. It's probably the simplest to build. So, big picture, hardship. What is a hardship? It's a difference between a typical site and the actual site. So for this subject application, if we just put aside the landmark, is this site, does this site have a hardship? Probably, not probably, mostly not, because most of the sites in the city, they need to dig next to a neighbor. They need to put underpinning. They need to do some excavation support, probably some de-ordering as well. They need to excavate. But guess what? On this project, most likely, if they just use some, like, good engineering practice, they can eliminate most of that. The site is already dug, there is a cellar there. The site already had, has a, a sub-seller, a cellar slab. They could use this to brace the adjacent buildings. That, that site doesn't have, it doesn't appear to have shallow groundwater. Groundwater appears it's, it's deeper than the cellar. I haven't seen any like, uh, moisture on the, I, I, I did visit the, visit the site, by the way, and that was Friday. It wasn't the weekend, it was Friday. And, and when I went at the site, that cellar slab was, the basement slab was in very good shape. No, nothing, no moisture, it's too level, it's, looks No moshur, it's too level, it looks beautiful. And guess what? When I, when I was like talking to the guy who guided me, guided me, guided me to the. Like walked me through the side, I was like, oh, you know what? If it's up to me, I wouldn't, I wouldn't demolish this cellar slab. And what he said is, it's not gonna be demolished. That's, that's why he told me. And I said, yeah, good, good deal. If, if this is the thinking, this is the way it should be done. So if you keep that cellar slab in place. If you do not build a cellar that's deeper than what is existing. You just go up with, with that depth that's currently existing. And you don't need more than that. You got a good cellar with a reasonable height that you could use for parking. If you do that, this site perimeter is about a thousand feet. And if you look at the underpinning section. They have two ground anchors in the section over the height of the wall. And the spacing for these gra- I just want to give you like a figure, round figure of what they could save just with one simple thinking like that. Two ground anchors per section vertically. The spacing for the ground anchors is about eight feet. I'm gonna say ten to make it simple. The perimeter of that side is a thousand feet. So thousand divided by ten, that's hundred. You have hundred segment. You have two anchors for each section, times a hundred, that's two hundred anchors. The cost for just one anchor is probably around ten thousand dollars. To install and test and make sure that it's working. Just by this simple trick, you can save two hundred times ten thousand. That's two million savings. That makes that site, if the landmark is there, privileged. What else? Excavation. This site is a thousand feet, uh, not a ta- thousand feet by two hundred feet, roughly. If you multiply this by just will be deep and give the quantity of the excavation. This is huge amount of savings that you could save by having this site. Add that to the two million. And what else? You have a slab on grade already in place. All what you can do is just pour four inch. Concrete blending on top of that and you've got it done. What else? You can put machines into that cellar. Minor excavation support. Your excavation support could be very minimal. How? Instead of you put under, and I'm not sure if the adjacent buildings are already underpinned. I presume that if the, that building, that subject building is built after the neighbors. Then the adjacent building should have been under, underpinned. Otherwise, they could have to let. And if the buildings were built after the subject building is in place. The foundation level for them should match the foundation level for the current building, for the subject building. So you could save by just, instead of a complicated excavation support system and you install high sections. And you install this and that, you just can go put some rakers. And, and just support the adjacent building temporarily lightly. Using some steel beams and just tie these beams to the existing cellar slab. And you're gonna save probably seventy-five percent of the excavation support. So again, if you put the landmark portion together as hide. The, this side, actually, if, if there is a building that qualifies for. A reduction in zoning parameters, that could be, it's really privileged site without the landmark. So what is the source of the claimed hardship here? The landmark, what is the scope for the landmark removal? When I went to the site and I stayed there for like forty-five minutes, I went inside. The demo for the building is currently in progress. I saw that they put uh, like, like uh. Cladding around that landmark piece, but inside, like to, towards the back. They started like knocking down some, some beams, some walls. And, and, but when I went to the site, they said that the site is, is like on hold for a week or so. So it wasn't, it wasn't real work on progress. On the day I was there. But that gentleman who walked me through again, he told me, when I, when I was looking at the landmark. I, I, something that caught my eye was, I haven't, I got a, a vibration monitoring plan that's very extensive. And when I looked at it before I go to the side, I said, okay, when I go to the side, I must look at these vibration monitors, these bris. See where they are located. It's, it's fun for me. I like these kind of stuff. But when I went there and I looked, I couldn't find any. You have a picture for the building, uh. One second. I don't know why this is not moving. Come on. Yep. Yeah, here. If you look at this, I see muffling, just exit sign here, some other sign here. But I walked around this building and I couldn't, I couldn't see any like uh, surveying pres. Uh, these kind of phrases that you, you attach to the building to know how much they move and to monitor that. And that is done live. Like over, over the hour, across the hour. So I haven't seen that. And when I asked it, the, the guy, where are these things? What is, what is going on with this? Part of the building or with this entire building? He told me that everything is going down. The plan is to knock everything down. I, I, I understand this may sound crazy, but that's what I understood from him. He, that's, if you look at inside to the pictures I submitted, you see a spiral stairs. He pointed to that, he like pointed to that spiral stair and he said, this is going down. And I was like, if this is going down. I believe this variance should be going down, even the old one should be going down actually, because like I just described. You're muted, you're muted. I, I can't hear you.
Attorney, you're muted.
There's this huge restrictive declaration on the site that requires the theater to be built, right? And all of those um, plaster pieces are sitting in Evergreen Studios being restored. So um, you know, when the equivalent I was talking about of Abu Simbel. I don't know whether their landmarks was allowing them to take down the superstructure. We should have landmarks involved in this discussion. Um, I don't know if landmarks is allowing the superstructure to be removed. Um, and then the plaster pieces coming back onto them, or they have to retain the superstructure. And then they attach the plant, the plaster pieces. But we can't say that they don't have an obligation for the six to eight million dollars worth of return. Of all of those plaster restored pieces to the site. So even if. For, for arguments state, they could clear the entire site and the, and the landmark box is not being. Isn't being created, no matter what, they have to bring the theater pieces back and reinstall them. So whether they're creating like an Abu Simbel superstructure onto which they'll be clamped. Or whether they're putting it on the original superstructure, no matter what, you're still at the six, at six million and hard and two million. In, in soft costs. That, that's something we have to accept. So this is a case where I'd have to say. You can't say you don't have a unique condition. There's this landmark in the middle of the site. And you can't say you don't have a lot of money that you have to spend on it. Whether or not the lot of money is, needs this big of a variance or this big of a variance, you still have that. That part is in restrictive declarations and money spent. You can see how much money was already spent. From, with Evergreen and all the drawings and all the work they're doing. So that part of it, I don't want to say. You know, ah, the landmark's a benefit and they made all this money off of spending eight million dollars. No.
No, I said without, I, I, I thought what I said is without the landmark, this site is privileged. And it doesn't qualify for a variance. That's, that's what I said, without it. But wi- wi- with the landmark, if the structure is gonna stay in place, and I believe this is what is being submitted to us. On the drawings, it describes part of the building, part of the theater. It's a doomed Porsche and then it's the portion south to that. It says to remain.
Yes.
My, my understanding from the side visit is it's not gonna remain. Probably the guy, probably it was a miscommunication between me and the guy. That's, that's what I'm gonna say for now. But even, even if it stays. That one of the, one of the points that they talked about in their submission, one of that hardships. That's added to the previous argument, I, I, I'm not sure, maybe it was part of the previous variance that. Bridging over the existing theater. Like you said, why? For a residential garden, you wanna add up all this cost just for a residential. That, that's really extensive structural system that need to be built. And the added value, I'm not sure if it's worth it. The parking garage downstairs, the cellar, the cellar is already there. Why you wanna deepen this? It, you have, you have tons of cost that could be eliminated if this project is designed. With the mentality to simplify. That's why I started my, my uh, point with. I believe this project is complicated because it's di- it, it is designed to be complicated. So we need to, like, them to brief us on all of this. And, and in addition to that. Uh, this is, this is what I, I need to see. Number one, a confirmation of what's gonna remain and what, what is gonna demolish. In, in particular, the landmark superstructure and the existing seller's lab. We need to identify and itemize the hardship elements and associated cost. And provide feedback and supporting camps for such associated cause. I haven't seen like cost. Uh, calculations for every single hardship element that's sub- submitted. Sometimes in the statement of facts. Lumps some numbers and in, in some other document, like a document entitled evidence or titled evidence. Of uniqueness dash premium construction cost. And when I looked at that. It doesn't have that much money that was described in the statement of fact. So they need to explain to us, at least to me. What does this document mean for their hardship, for the, for the total hardship amount that's claimed? Uh. In addition to that. Why they cannot just keep the cellar slab like I said and save underpinnings, if they say they so easy, the excavation. If all of that tons of money that would simplify this project and, and makes it much cheaper. And ma- much simpler. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Shireta.
Uh, thank you Chair. Um, so a lot was said. Uh. I'll, I'll start off um, with the uh, simple stuff. Uh. I see an A finding, I see a B finding. And I think uh, the C D findings are met as well. My, uh, I think we're all stuck on the E finding. Um, I, I'm a bit, I'd like some more information as to the difference between. What uh, the applicant uh, needs to make himself whole and, and what the applicant wants. Um. I, I've been trying to go back and forth from what the original variants and the. The, the hardships that they claimed then and what is so different now. Um, I don't understand, a- and as was mentioned by you Chair, why they need that new cellar. Don't understand, and the garden, which apparently are adding a great deal to costs. Um, is, it seems like that this is a design want and not something that uh, they need to be made whole. So uh, perhaps I think that it'd be best to redesign uh, certain portions of this project so that. So that uh, we don't have to uh, continue to add floors here.
Anything else that?
That's all.
I just want to add with respect to one of the ver- the waiver requests for open space. And because the theater building, um, it, we, you know, represents a certain height level. You can't have open space um. At the, at grade, right? But open space is permitted to be on the roof of commercial buildings and community facility buildings. Under, under the zoning regulations. So um, if you're going to have open space, you can have it on the roof of something. So I don't want to discourage open space on the roof. Maybe there's open space on the theater, is or isn't necessary, but um. But in the interest of having the required amount of open space. Um, or as close to the required as necessary, that's accessible to the residents, which is where open space is required. Um, I don't want to discourage having gardens on the roof, which improves the quality of life of, of the community. The fact that the na- the residents don't have anywhere to go except for some polluted. You know, middle of the roadway so-called park, which really isn't a park, it's like a strip. Um, so someplace for them to recreate, part of what zoning wants. Um, I don't want to discourage that um, because of issues about structure on top of the landmarks. But for instance, they're putting community facility on top of the landmarks. Is that really necessary? Et cetera, et cetera. So, and I see, um, and the last variant didn't have any rear yard waivers. So then you ask, well, why does this one need a rear yard waiver? Um, and Commissioner Shonda's hand is up. Go ahead. You're muted.
Sorry, sorry. Uh, no, first of all, I want to, um, you know, I, I think it would be very helpful. Uh, to start this discussion of uh, whether it's the applicant's side or from anybody. To get a really full, clear history of the landmarks, uh, preservation project. And what uh, the obligations are, so that we are all clear. I think some of us have been, I can say three of us here, uh, including you and Commissioner Ottley Brown. We are familiar with the history of uh, the tortured history of Archibald Theater. And what are the commitments and everything that were ironed out over several years. And uh, and, and why it is where it is. So I think it would be helpful for all of us to be on the same play, page. To understand the extent and the level of the complexity that this interior landmark offers and why it has been delayed for this very reason. Because of, it's just requires so much of improvement and other, there are other reasons, but the improvement, interior improvement. Is a big part of the cost delay and construction delay and, and, and uh, other things. What I actually found very interesting is when I was looking at the previously approved uh, plan. Uh, in the previously approved plan, yeah, the residential bill, uh, units were located, uh, um, were located. Um, and I'm trying to look at the plan. Uh, it, uh, from fourth floor onwards, the residential units were located on the. Uh.
Landmark.
On the landmark from the Northern Boulevard, then perpendicular over it and then in the back. And instead of that, um, you know, they just replace the residential with the community facility use. Um, but it doesn't go all the way up. It only goes for a very, much shorter height than the residential one did. Um, so I for one, I think it's a less of a, uh, it's adding less of a constructional burden. Or load or whatever I feel in my limited knowledge that it is doing on this side, which I think is a good thing. Uh, and also it's setting the building, the, the new building away from the theater building. And they're actually restoring the image of the, the, the look of the uh, Archi Theater, Archio Theater to almost what it was before. Than the previous proposal did. The preu- preview, uh, previous proposal had little bit of it and then it had the residential building. Here it's trying to retain as much of the original look and the rest of the building is so far behind. That it kind of reads as a separate building. So from that point of, from a neighborhood ca- character, I didn't say that and that's in my note. ca- character, I didn't say that, and that's in my note, that I think the placement of this volume, the proposed volume is, uh, is, it's much more respectful of the landmark structure, the interior and, and trying to restore the exterior of it. Um, so, um, you know, I agree, um, uh, with some of the things and, and I, you know, I'm often reminded, there are certain things I take for granted when I say these things, that yes, it meets the A, B, C, D, the E is the only one in my mind. Is that's the question? And then that's one of the reasons I wanted to raise my hand because I didn't mention it initially.
Okay, thanks. And I see Tracy's hand up, but before she speaks, um, because it's a question for Tracy. The landmarks commission really needs to be involved in the seeker review here because, um, we need to make sure that they're aware of all the changes to the project. I know eventually this will, this might go back to landmarks. I'm not really sure how that will work, given that it's a building on top of the landmark. But they need to be aware of all of the proposed changes to how the, how the box of the landmark itself is being treated with this new building. So we should be sending the project materials to landmarks for their review as well as part of seeker review. Okay? Um, and so Tracy, go ahead.
Yes, Chair. I wanted to clarify that the revised E A S submitted on November 8th, 2020, in response to our notice of comments, does have a historic and cultural resource attachment. Um, it starts on page 94 of the PDF. And, uh, L P C will be involved in the reviews. We haven't initiated those yet. Um, we are, we are waiting. We are waiting to hear it.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I, but I'd like L P C to get, um, copies of the, of the drawings and everything also.
Yeah, they usually ask for them.
Hi, there is an email in the file, um, from L P C and the applicant that they have been in communication about the project.
But this should come from us as opposed to only from the applicant, right? Because we, we now have this relationship with L P C to do seeker reviews as opposed to, um, what were really, uh, sort of sign offs on archaeological and, um, now it's going to be like we had.
Yeah, that's understood. I just wanted to let you know about the email. Um, and it's a, an email from L P C to the applicant.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, so let's go on. Tony, you're muted still.
Sorry, sorry. Um, this concludes the public review session for February 9th, 2021, 2 P M. We now commence with the public hearing. The first item up, new case is item number 27, 2020, 48 B Z, 237, 241, East 86th Street, Manhattan.
I don't know whose case this is. It's either Lisa Franks, you would find.
If you're here to speak on 2020 dash 48 B Z, please raise your hand. Oh, I see, uh, Mr. St. Jacques just joined.
Hi, good afternoon. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Great.
Are you alone or with someone else?
You know what? There, there's several folks, uh, um, from the project team that, that, um, have joined. I'm, I'm not sure we'll, we'll need them, but I, I guess if they need to, to swear in.
Yeah. So who are they? Yeah, it's Jared Smith. Is that one of them?
You, you know what? Let me just, uh, check and see who's here. Um, so it would be, actually, I, I don't think anyone joined from, from the team. So, so I'm, I'm happy to, to just move forward.
I raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to the board member questions?
I do.
State your name for the record and proceed.
Thank you. Uh, Frank Senjak Akerman, L L P for the applicant. Um, we, uh, listened to the comments at this afternoon's review session. I just have a, two brief responses. Um, I'll, I'll note that we are happy to submit a revised plan set, uh, with, with a note regarding the sound system, that it will be limited. If the, the board has specific language you'd like us to use, we're, we're happy to use that. I know we've included that language on uh, o- other applications, um, so I can be in touch with the project manager on that. I, I'll also note, it, it was my understanding that the, um, sign analysis and zoning analysis, uh, forms were, were not required for the, the P C E applications. Uh, if that's not the case, we can, um, you know, certainly submit those, uh, you know, for, for this application or other applications moving forward.
So I think we said that the sign analysis is on the drawing, right?
It, it is, yes. And, and that's, you know, I, there are, uh, the relevant zoning calculations as well as the sign analysis on the drawings. I just wanted to confirm that the separate B S A sign analyses, analysis and zoning analysis, uh, forms are, are, are not needed for P C E applications, which is my understanding from the, uh, the, the new, um, forms and instructions, uh, for P C E applications.
I don't want to get into that because I don't know the answer. Let's just leave that you've got your sign analysis and zoning on the drawings.
Perfect. Great. So, um, I, I, that's, uh, I, I believe that, that addresses everything. We can turn those revised plans around with that note, uh, very quickly this, this week if needed. And I'm happy to answer any questions if, if there are any, uh, open issues.
I don't think so. So let's go to the public quickly.
This application is 2020, 48 B Z, 237, 241, East 86th Street, Manhattan. You want to call in at 646-558-8656. Zoom webinar ID number is 998-2780-1274. And if you're in the Zoom room, raise your hand, your Zoom hand.
Okay. So how much time did you say you need to make that one little note change?
I, I, I think the architect is working on it now, so we can have that in before the end of the week.
So I just write. Okay, another couple of seconds. Okay, so I, I'd actually, um, assuming nobody called in. Anyone in the Zoom room who would like to speak on this, please raise your Zoom hand. Um, there are people whose hands are up.
Mr. Shane is registered with Barry's Bootcamp and Emily Lindsay is registered with DXU Architects.
Okay, how about Ryan Watzbecker?
He, he is the project's environmental consultant, or excuse me, the project's, uh, sound, uh, sound consultant.
Okay, I don't think actually though we had any because you already had applicable information on your drawings, right? Is that right?
So we, we, we have, um, m- members of the team here if, if needed for questions, but I, I think it, it sounds as though we were, that they, they may not need, be needed.
Okay, so, um, I would ask everyone who doesn't need to speak to lower their hands. So I can tell the difference between public and, yeah, thank you, between public and not public. Okay, good. So, um, okay, so then I would like to make a motion to close.
Chair, oh, sorry. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
I think he's actually absent for, for a little bit, so let's move on. We have a forum.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item is 2020 B Z, 2020 dash 30 B Z, 3740, 31st Street, Queens.
Hi, how are you? Um, I saw from our team Dominic Fortino, I saw him in the.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I think. And then we're also supposed to have a Brian calling in. His last four digits are, I mean, I don't think we'll need him, but still, his last four digits are 8799.
All right, so he hasn't called in yet, but so let's, let's proceed as you know we need to do.
Swearing.
Yeah. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do. Elise Foladere from Eric Palatnik P C. Um, you asked, um, three questions, one for the sign analysis. We can have the sign analysis just for the P C E and none of the other signs on the building. That is an easy change. Thank you very much. And then Dominic is going to tell you about the pharmacy next door and the music.
Sure. Hi, everybody. Thank you for having us and entertaining our application. I'm Dominic Fortino. I am the, uh, business operator, the owner there. Uh, just listening earlier in a couple of your questions. First, the, the pharmacy sign on the front of the building is just an advertisement for the building that's next door. If you look from the 38th Avenue side directly onto the property, you'll see it's a separate standalone building. That is the pharmacy. Now, so it's a neighboring, it's a neighboring business there. Um, so separate, it's not within the same walls of our business. Uh, as for the, as for the music, uh, we play music, I would say about 15 minutes every class hour. Uh, we're a very, I know our nomenclature is, is CrossFit. We're, we're a strength and training facility, so it's very heavily instructed, uh, instruction based. Spend a lot of time with members and it's difficult to speak over loud music. So we generally don't play the music much until they're executing their, their work towards the end of the class hour. Um, and we haven't had any noise complaints in the several, at least the last two years of what I can remember from us operating there. And, um, I think that's a combination of design and coverage and, and the one other property on the other side is in fact a distributor for laundry products. So that was correct in the application you mentioned earlier.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I just want to be clear, um, that yes, the, the pharmacy is in the next building, but the building is within the zoning lot. So this is the, the warehouse is like one standalone building and there's an L-shaped building that wraps around it. And one portion of it is the pharmacy and the other portion is the, the, the laundry service. So that's why I asked, uh, the, the pharmacy sign is within the zoning lot, but it should not be included in the zoning analysis. Uh, because it's for a different use within the zoning lot. Right?
Where it's in the same zoning lot?
Yep. It's in the same zoning lot. If you look at it, the building kind of, it's like a, it's a square box surrounded by two uh, rectangular shapes on the rear lots. And one of, one of the, uh, one of them is used by the laundry service. The other one is the pharmacy.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Foladere or Mr. Fortino? Okay, so let's go to the public.
The case that we're discussing currently is 2020 dash 30 B Z, 3740, 31st Street, Queens. If you wish to call in, it's 646-558-8656. Zoom webinar ID number is 998-2780-1274.
Okay, so I don't think there were, while we, oh, so there is a 799 number. That was someone you were referring to, Ms. Foladere, right?
Yeah, that was in case you needed the architect.
Okay, we don't need you. Okay, and if anyone else is in the Zoom room and you'd like to speak, please raise your Zoom hand. And, and the architect actually needs to speak, you raise your Zoom hand by dialing star six.
But you don't need to if you're the architect.
Star nine, sorry. Don't need to, says your counsel.
You're good.
Why the getting's good, right?
Right, exactly. So then I would like to, so we don't have any, oh, we do. We have a sign submission, right? Sign analysis only for the P C E. So, so how much time to submit that?
Uh, since it's only one thing, I would say similar to what Frank just said, and probably by the end of the week, we could. So we'll take what you can give us.
All right then, so I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter? Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Item number 29, 2020, 37 B Z, 217, 7th Avenue, Manhattan.
All right.
Please state your name.
All right, Jay Goldstein for the applicant.
Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Please proceed.
Uh, good afternoon, Jay Goldstein for the applicant. I listened to the review session and I don't believe there were any questions for you.
Correct. Anything that we left out? Any other commissioners? Any comments? No. Yay. Let's go to the public.
The case we are discussing currently is 2020, 37 B Z, 217, 7th Avenue, Manhattan. If you're going to call in, it's 646-558-8656. The Zoom webinar ID number is 998-2780-1274. And if you're in the Zoom room, please raise your, please raise your Zoom hand to speak.
Yes, correct. Right then. So I don't see anybody raising their hand in the Zoom room. Um, so there is nothing to submit. So I would say we'll put this on as soon as we can.
Sure.
Well, then, motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
Twenty, the next item is item number 30, 2020, 41 B Z, 107 dash 02, Queens Boulevard, Queens.
Hi, uh, Frank Senjak for the applicant.
Hey, raise your right hand. Do you, are you the only one? Right?
I am.
Okay. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Please state your name for the record and proceed.
Uh, Frank Senjak, Akerman, L L P for the applicant. Uh, we listened to the comments at this afternoon's review session. We are happy to add a note to the plans with respect to the sound system, uh, being limited. We can also request a, uh, letter from the building engineer, uh, with respect to, um, uh, vibration traveling, uh, from the, the cellar space, uh, through the building upward. Um, a- as the, the board, um, discussed in the review session, there, there are, um, there's a, a ground floor, uh, commercial and a second floor, uh, parking that separates the cellar, uh, fitness area of, of the proposed P C E, uh, from the residential use. So, uh, we will, um, ask the engineer to, uh, describe that and, and that there, there, uh, is not anticipated to be any, uh, adverse effect in terms of sound or vibration, uh, from the proposed P C E.
Okay, so any other comments from anybody? Let's go to the public.
Okay, the case that we're, oh, sorry, Kurt. The case that we're discussing is 2020, 41 B Z, 107, 02, Queens Boulevard, Queens. If you wish to call in, it's 646-558-8656. And the Zoom webinar ID number is 998-2780-1274. And if you're in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand to speak.
Right. So also the other thing that we needed was a type two checklist. Right?
Yes, understood. Um, I, I submitted that in, or in formally sent that to, um, uh, to staff and we will submit that formally with the revised, uh, plans and engineer letter.
Okay, how much time to submit?
Um, I, I think we can do so quickly on, on this matter, uh, I'd say about a week.
About. When you say about, then I.
That, two weeks would be great.
Okay. Okay. Uh, and if there's anyone in the Zoom room who would like to speak on this, please raise your Zoom hand. I don't see anybody with their hands up and I think I recognize all the names. Okay. All right then, so two weeks to submit. So, um, I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number 31, 2020, 42 B Z, 155 Gerard Street, Brooklyn.
Hi, I'm Elise Foladere. I should have a Dimitro in the waiting room.
Not anymore. He was here for hours, it feels like.
Maybe I'll give him a call. I emailed him.
He's in the room.
Okay, cool.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
He's a very patient man, because you've seen him for hours.
Okay. Ready?
Yeah.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do. Um, Elise Fulladare with Eric.
Is your guy going to respond to that also?
Oh, yeah, Mr.
Dimitro. Mr. Cronol Brevits? Sorry. Did you say, "I am muted"? You know, we can't hear anything you say. You muted yourself somehow or your speaker is off. Maybe your speaker's off. Now you're muted again. Now you're officially muted because we can see you're mute, but your speaker. Your speaker's off, or maybe you need to call in. So um, actually, what's the dial-in number for just calling in in case for some reason he's having trouble with those? Six four six five five eight eight six five six. Oh.
Maybe go.
Got it? Dimitro, can you see the, show the screen of the phone number to call? Please, Kurt? There you go.
I'm also calling on the telephone.
Great, okay.
Do you hear me?
Yes, we do.
Okay, I, I do.
Yeah. Okay, just let me sway you in again now, sir. Can you hear me?
Um. Yes, I hear you.
Okay. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to honestly respond to board questions?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Ms. Fulladare, now you can proceed.
Elise Fulladare from Eric Palatnik PC. Um, we heard your comments and I think the first thing I'd like to address is flood compliance. Um, it has been our experience since we've worked at the board that since you changed the ZRD one CCD one standard to now require that we go to the plan examiner and resolve all flood compliance um, ma- matters. So what we did is with the original application, it should be in the original BSA application before we even filed here, we took those DOB objections to the plan examiner and resolved all our flood compliance issues.
So do we have a copy of the DOB?
It was filed in the original application as part of it.
Oh.
Can resend it, but we.
Well, maybe, maybe it's there and I didn't know to look, or maybe it wasn't titled, then it's, it first applied in, in uh, May and it's, I don't see D, I see DOB objection, I don't see that as one of them.
I'll tell you what it's called.
Well, PW three. We, first of all, we have to resume cost of job to prove that it's not substantial uh, improvement.
Yes.
And that's number one objection that I had to remove.
It's called.
Otherwise, it would be a different project.
It's called, so there's two things. There's Department of Buildings denial, which is your denial that we always file, and then there's a Department of Buildings objection, list of objections. And that was filed with you.
Ah, okay, good, thank you.
And it says the resolve date on it.
Which, which is the, you know what number it is, or no?
Objection.
Oh, here it is. Appendix E, the subject property is located in the flood zone, indicate on Schedule A that property is located within the flood zone, you can better. Determine the design flood elevation, okay, but that's different. To the extent required. As per Appendix G, the subject property is located in the flood zone, indicate on Schedule A that property. I don't see the sign off on the, to the extent required by one oh two, all developments shall be designed and constructed. I, I actually don't see.
Uh, the way it works.
Yeah, let him explain it.
Number one, PW three.
Do you want me to show this?
I, I'm looking action. I don't see the sign off related. I don't, I keep scrolling down and I, those, those numbers, so I'm just going to name the objection numbers, right? So, uh, so the, the Appendix G objection starts with Appendix number ten and it just says, you know, indicate on the Schedule A, so that one was resolved. Then number eleven says, indicate what flood zone you're in, that one was resolved. Then it gets into things about um, dry floodproofing and all that, that doesn't show resolution. Then it says, indicate on Scut, Schedule A that property is located within the flood zone, that was resolved, so that's all, that's different, right? And then you're going through all the things about enclosures below and all of that stuff, that doesn't show any resolution.
Yeah. Can I talk, uh, it's a construction type. Number one.
Number one.
PW three, course. Based on my, uh, if you look on the page.
We don't have PW three.
Zero zero three. There's substantial improvement as per New York Regulation thirty-six oh six dash oh one. Uh, I have to prove that I'm not substantially improving, improving property. And that, once you accepted my course and by that formula, I'm not anymore in a substantial improvement.
So maybe, maybe what we can do is I can, I can, one, share the screen, but two, maybe you can go back to DOB and get something that's a little clearer, or we can write to DOB and get something clearer, is that possible?
Then we need something in words or letter?
Yes, because what we have is a notice of objections with all of these objection numbers still open. They don't say resolved. They, unless there was a later one that I don't know about, but the one that we have from May thirteenth has many, many open objections. Um, and the ones that have to do with Appendix G are not resolved other than to show the flood plain, flood zone like that, right? Maybe there's a later one.
Uh, how to explain? I still have to comply, comply, uh, comply with Appendix G but for material unfinishedness and other material to for exist instructions prior to substitu- prior to FEMA.
So, okay, so here's the thing, we can't, we can't rely on just to say so. We need a sign off from DOB that the drawings comply with Appendix G. So that's where the ZRD ones and the CCD ones are handy like that, because they reviewed the drawings and it just said what we needed to see. Um, maybe there's a way to go back and say, uh, the drawings now comply, something like that, I don't know. But I don't know what to do, because it's showing all the objections still open as opposed to resolve. Because if you only had to comply with materials, it would say resolved, right?
I don't really have to resolve them right now, uh, the, right now.
Do, for us.
She's saying that she needs to see them resolved.
Otherwise, being asked to decide whether or not you're a substantial improvement and we cannot do that. That's always.
Because I still will do Appendix G either way. The only, the difference is if you have a substantial improvement, you have to raise your house.
I know.
If you're not substantial, you don't have to raise it.
We know.
And that's why.
So you're not raising it. So as far as we're concerned, you've made a determination, because we don't have anything from DOB, that you're not a substantial improvement, therefore you don't have to raise your house. So that's why we need to see from DOB that they agree with you, that you're not a substantial improvement. Okay?
Um, okay, let me schedule appointment.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess, so the next issue is um, the legal non-compliance. Unfortunately, Sandborne, when you order a list of Sandborne maps, they go, they give you typically nineteen fifty and then nineteen sixty-six, nothing exists in between. And that's happened on a lot of the times we order a series of Sandborne maps, and this home was built in nineteen fifty-five, so we're going to attempt to go back through DOB records and see if we can find something from nineteen fifty-five to nineteen sixty-one, because Sandborne does not produce that.
Okay, so that's the that's the critical question here.
Yeah, so all we could show you by producing Sandborne maps was nineteen fifty and nineteen sixty-six.
Okay, but so, you know, for future use on these applications, that's not informative. If the thing wasn't there in the nineteen fifty-five map, then it basically, it told us nothing. It told us the, the addition is illegal. So either you have it in sixty-one or it's illegal.
Yeah, and some can't rely on Sandborne, so we're going to have to figure out another one.
And sometimes you can find old building departments drawings, it's amazing what they have in their archives sometimes, or even in, I don't know, the public library, there's like weird sources.
Um, and then your last thing to discuss, I believe, is about showing the joists to remain and showing the walls to remain and how you would like.
Okay, on the page uh, ten, eleven, I show by shaded area how many walls I plan to keep. So I keep wholesaler foundation and I keep fifty percent of first and second floor walls. Also based on building department standards on the page twelve. Starting, I think, two thousand sixteen, I have to do different type of calculations and that I don't have to file new building all or either alteration one.
Right, so let me stop you before you continue. Our standard is different, this is not a buildings department standard, this is the special permit standard. So you have to show us different things than what you're showing the buildings department, okay? What we care about, that fifty percent of the, of the existing perimeter walls of the existing building are retained and not demolished, retained for use in your enlarged building. And that fifty percent of the floor joists of the first floor, and in this case, the second floor, are retained and not removed um, in your enlarged building. And so um, the, the, and actually, you know, we have really good um, sample drawings that we show applicants in case Ms. Fulladare you want to show him, but the um, but you need to be very clear on your drawings, like for instance, if I go to BSA ten, there's this, um, not BSA ten. Um. If I, if I go to the demolition drawings, each drawing needs to have, or each drawing needs to have the legend on it, so you can follow along which are the walls to retain and which are the walls to be removed. So for example, on BSA twelve, you have these solid walls and then you have, not solid walls, but there's no legend. Right?
Actually, well, is for another, no, it's page eleven, I understand, okay.
So it's, well, it's BSA twelve, so I'm looking at each drawing and I'm trying to understand what's the single, the, the codes on the drawings. So the legends have to be on each drawing and then with respect to the compliance analysis, so that's your alt-two filing analysis, that's not the same standard that we use. What we're using is what's the amount of existing walls and how many existing, how much of the existing walls are being retained? So you need to actually show the dimension of each wall section, so it would actually say five foot eight inches, eight foot six inches, four foot three inches, and you'll show those dimensions on those drawings on B twelve or some equivalent one like that, and then you'll show those numbers all added up and the total is however many linear feet you have in the existing building and then the total is however many linear feet of the existing building you're retaining. And that number has to be existi- it's fifty percent, okay?
Okay.
Okay, so then, um, and then if I were to go to your first floor plan, for example, I'm relying on your, the demolition plan or remaining structures plan that you had on BSA twelve, right? And it shows the first floor has pretty much remaining, it wraps all the way around. But when I go to your first floor plan, there's much more new, new walls shown on the drawings. So it doesn't match, it looks like only fifty-two foot ten inches are being retained based on the, the lead, based on the sort of hatching that you're doing. So you can't demolish more than the walls that you said you're going to retain. It's got to be fifty percent retained, so your uh, sort of symbol, your legend has to be very clear on each drawing, what's being retained and you need to show, you did show dimensions on these drawings on the BSA fourteen. Okay?
Okay.
If we go to your section, let's just go to BSA eighteen. It's the section on BSA eighteen and maybe the section is taken through the new part, so maybe that's, you also need to take a section through the old part. But it's showing the entire second floor joint are new. So the entire second floor joists can't be new. You need to retain the existing second floor joists and then you add the new joists for the new section.
Okay.
Which I don't, you have so many, because it's really the roof of the lower building in most cases, right?
I was also showing insulation and other elements, okay?
Yeah, so that's the thing, you can show insulation and all of that stuff, but, but you need to show a symbol, some kind of a symbol that indicates this is existing to be retained and this is new, okay?
Okay, I understand.
All right, so those are questions, comments, and then we'll get into, once we figure out about the rear yard extension, then we talk about this, the rest of the building. If I look at the height of the building, it looks like it's fitting in with the character of the neighborhood and uh, et cetera, et cetera. I don't think the ask is a lot. It's just that I don't think the threshold questions have been met yet, okay? Comments from anybody else? No? All right, let's go to the, you have any questions? No?
No.
Let's go to the public. Okay, this is twenty twenty forty-two BZ that we are discussing, one fifty-five Gerard Street, Brooklyn. Call-in number six four six five five eight eight six five six. Zoom webinar ID number is nine nine eight two seven eight zero one two seven four. You wish to call in for this case? And if you're in the Zoom room, Zoom room already, it is, raise your Zoom hand. To speak, sorry. Yes, exactly. So let's see. It was one neighbor who objected to this project. There is somebody, last three digits, one two one. Um, if you're interested in speaking on this application, um, what's he addressing again? One fifty-five Gerard Street, Brooklyn. Okay, so if you'd like to speak about Gerard Street in Brooklyn and you called in, uh, star nine, will raise your hand. So if you'd like to speak on this, raise your hand, please. Okay, how much time, um, would you, and could you just pronounce your last name for me, please? Mr. Dimitro.
Dimitro?
Uh, uh, what?
Pronounce your last name, because I know I'm messing it up.
No, bring it.
Cronol Brevits, is that right?
Cronol Brevits, yes.
Okay. Um, how much time do you need to make the changes to the drawings? Slash.
Do changes in one week, it's not much. But I have to, I'm trying to schedule appointment to see when I could get the plan examiner appointment. I could see drawings by Monday, it's not a big deal. But to get appointment makes a difference.
So what do you think about the appointment?
Uh, within one week, uh, within one month, I definitely, or two weeks, I will get an appointment, within two weeks. Uh, it, actually, it was not that much busy, probably within one week I get your appointment and probably another week when I'll be able to give you everything you need.
Okay, and then in terms of, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just want to make sure that the plan examiner put uh, proper notes on their objections and properly like, uh, signed it off.
Correct, so you, what you. Correct, so what you, something from them that says the drawings as you presented comply with Appendix G, right? And you know, they accept, make sure the materials or something like that, if it's just materials, right? But it can't be something like the floodproofing is missing or something like that, because then it needs to be.
Can I, can I ask a plan examiner to write, it's not a substantial improvement project? All other flood zone compliance will be resolved during next plan examination. Because it's mostly materials, for my concern is not to raise a building.
Okay.
So if she comply with, if she okay with, it's not a substantial improvement, I could keep existing structure.
Yes, that's what we, yes.
Because it's free FEMA, I have the right to maintain existing structure.
Yeah, yes, that's, that would be good, because that's what we want to know. Are you required to lift the building or aren't you? Right, that's what we want.
Okay.
So.
That's, if I resolve it, cannot resubmit it. And I will resolve materials not being real fixed.
Right, yes, that's okay. Okay, fine.
Then I need at least probably two weeks to make sure we're on the same page with the plan examiner.
Okay, all right, got it. And Ms. Foladere, about getting your proof of non-compliant condition?
I mean, I also have to talk to Dmitra about that or other people who can go to DOB and go through microfilm.
Ah, okay, so what are we talking about, four weeks?
Um, I think two to three weeks. I see he was saying the plan examiner and that'll probably take around the same amount of time, so probably within the month. We can figure that.
Great, all right.
It's easy, within the month, it's easy.
Okay, let's, four weeks to submit, all right? Makes it easy. Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Yes. Okay, the next, are we done? Thank you. The next item is item number 32, 202045BZ and 12715. Should we just call it separate? You want me to call it separate or just do it together?
No, we'll do it together because we decided that we're not going to pursue too much on the special permit. I see Mr. Pittman's here, but he actually doesn't really need to listen unless he feels like it, because he loves us so much.
Okay, 12715BZ, 13535-35 Northern Boulevard, Queens. This is that Goldman Harris application. Mr. Schnackenberg.
Hello there.
How are you doing? So it's you, Mr. Pittman, anyone else?
Uh, are we swearing in, Ms. Mathias?
Yes, yes, you have your, all your people there?
Uh, there are a number of people, I think, still, that are still joining. But at least initially, it'll be myself, Randy Guerner, Howard Goldman. We'll have, Jack will certainly, Jack Freeman will be speaking tonight. I think that will be it from our side initially. Do you, do you swear us in all at once? I'm sorry, I can't remember.
Yeah, it'd be nice if I could. There's a lot of other names on this list before us. So are any of those people going to speak? We have David Jiang, Nada.
We have, pardon me for interrupting, Madam Chair. With us tonight, we have a number of, of our development team professionals. We wanted to make sure that we were able to answer any of your questions. So we sort of asked the whole team to attend. Based on the executive review session, I think we'll be doing a little bit more listening and a little bit less speaking tonight and responding to some of your concerns in writing. So some of our professionals will probably not be speaking tonight. They're here, sort of, they were here just in case.
Okay, I see Carlo's hand is up. Go ahead, Carlo.
No, no, I just wanted to alert the board that Mr. Charles Appelain from the community board was on, but he had to leave due to another meeting. And just alerted me that he would put his comments in writing and submit them into the record.
Okay, thanks. All right, go ahead. Okay, let's raise your right hand. You affirmed it, David? Oh, sorry. Do you affirm tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony for this board and to honestly respond, to respond honestly to board member questions?
You.
You do.
Anybody else?
Um, I do.
Okay, if you don't respond now, then I'm gonna have to re-swear you in later, so let's go.
Howard Goldman on the call?
Yes. Howard, say. I would say yes. Howard, do you now unmute yourself? If you, you unmute yourself either in the Zoom room, unmute, or you dial star, what is it, six, unmute yourself? Done, okay. All right.
Okay, so I'll, I'll try and sidebar with Howard via text. But I did want to just sort of start off briefly roadmap. So first of all, commissioners, thank you. It's been a long day, 5:30. I know it's not an easy time to start a very long hearing. We did hear your comments at review session. And we're going to make some adjustments based on those comments. I, I can acknowledge that it seems that one of the comments we heard was that we may have over-relied on some of the board's previous findings, particularly with respect to the A finding. Rather than go through all of that, we will try to address specific questions from the commissioner. But I think what we'll do is we will, in our next submission, better substantiate those findings on where we were relying on previous findings. An example, of course, is the obsolescence of the theater for its intended use. We can, we can sort of put that in writing. I don't think we need to belabor that point now unless there are specific questions. What I'd like to do is have Howard give a brief discussion about this particular owner and why we believe that this iteration of the project is the one that can be built. And after Howard speaks to that, I'd like to turn this to Randy to talk to you about the design choices that were made and a little bit about the proposed project. I know it's, it's late, we won't go into every single detail, we don't need to address every single waiver. But after Randy's done that, I'd like to briefly touch on the things that we heard during review session, ask some clarifying questions so that we make sure we get you what you needed on our next submission. And then, of course, entertain any questions that you have. I know that Commissioner Hartley Brown had some questions for Jack. And we certainly want to respond to Commissioner Sheta's questions and comments as well. I do want to add, just to correct the record, or at least to expand upon the record, Commissioner Sheta met with a, a site safety manager at the, at the site on Friday. I don't know that this individual, I don't know exactly who this individual was, but they weren't anyone, as far as we know, who was sort of qualified to answer substantive questions. Commissioner Sheta, we intend to respond in writing to every question that you raised, every issue that you raised. But we would ask you to sort of take with a grain of salt what you heard from the site safety manager who may not have known everything. For instance, I'm, I'm aware of 17 active vibration monitors on the site, four of which are actually within the landmark structure itself. So some of the information that was given to you, I think, was, was incorrect. And we'd like to correct it in writing as we go forward, if that's okay with you, sir.
I, I didn't say that the guy told me about the vibration monitors. He didn't mention anything about that. What I said is I looked at the facade of that portion that's been set to remain. And I walked around it and I couldn't see the cladded portion with the black, I don't know, materials that. But I did look at the facade from top to bottom, all around. And I couldn't find any vibration monitors in this pool. But the guy did not discuss with me anything about monitor.
So I would, I would, in the interest of the, let me just say this one thing. In the interest of the late hour, please allow all the applicant, applicant members to make their presentations without interruption. This is to all the commissioners, just let them all speak until they finish their presentation. And then we ask questions, okay? Because otherwise, this will go on for hours and we don't want it to go on for hours. Okay?
Sure, sure, of course, sure. The reason I jumped in for this, I just wanted to put the guy off the hook.
No, no, I, let's put people off the hook after they've had an opportunity to get on the hook or off the hook themselves, okay?
No, no one's in trouble. I just, just to finish the point, we will respond, Commissioner Sheta, with demonstrating where those vibration monitors are. We can submit reports as well. But taking a cue from the chair, I'm gonna turn this to Howard just to speak a little bit about the, about the developer and about how we got here, why we're, why we're here again. And then we'll, we'll move forward.
So, good afternoon, commissioners. Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Nice to see you all. I just want to go through the board's actions beginning in 2003. And I want to acknowledge the amount of work that the board has put into this project. The variance, original variance was approved in 2005. A letter of substantial compliance was issued in 2007. An extension of time to complete construction in 2010. An amendment of the variance in 2011. And then extensions of time in 2012, 2015, and 2019. There were three prior owners before the current applicant. There was Boimel Green. There was Northern RKO LLC, and there was Flushing Square LLC. And remarkably, there's been one lawyer who's represented all these applicants. I don't know, that's me. Except for one of the extensions. So I've been with this project since 2003, when we started to put the application together. The point I'd like to make, really, the basic point, is that of all the, of all the prior owners, and I don't mean to disparage anyone, this is the one who's gonna be able to build this project, okay? ZIN is listed on the New York Stock Exchange. They have built something like 200 million square feet of floor area worldwide. They have come into the New York market relatively recently, but they have completed two buildings. In, in, one in Brooklyn and the other one in Manhattan. And they're very serious. They've spent a lot of money on this and they've hired the best consultants available. So they're serious about this. And they're the guys who are gonna get this done. The, what ZIN has done, they acquired the site in 2016. They spent the next two years working with the Landmarks Commission to basically redo the certificate of appropriateness and the preservation plan. And, you know, all of the other things that Landmarks does. And it took them basically two years to accomplish that. They then started to work on a new building design with GKV Architects on a, a new and improved circulation within the building, vehicular circulation and parking. Phil Habib Associates. They changed the mix of uses rather substantially because the, the economy in 2018, 2019 was not the same as it was in 2003. They have obtained new approvals from the FAA. And they are currently involved in demolition as required by the Landmarks Preservation Commission. So these guys are deeply committed to the project. No one is gonna doubt that this is a difficult project. The 2019 board resolution on the extension said, and I quote, "This is an extremely complex project with significant challenges, including the preservation of an interior landmark." Those are the board's words, not mine. So in addition to acknowledging all the work that's been done by the board, by the applicant, I also want to acknowledge the community board's involvement with this project. They have worked extremely hard on this as unpaid volunteers all the way since 2003. And I'm happy to call many of them my friends. We were able to agree that there would be no increase in FAR, none, same FAR, 7.5. We were able to agree that the height would not be increased, at least the height to the roof. I, I don't know about the bulkheads, I leave that to the, to the construction people. But the height of the building would not increase. We offered to devote a portion of the community facility space to a community-based organization. And I think, I know we're still working on that. And we agreed at their request to study the possibility of having a garage entrance and exit on Farrington Street, which is the small side street, in addition to Northern Boulevard. And we looked at that and we thought it would not be feasible to do that. It's not a good idea to have the vehicles entering and exit on this narrow street. But we did the studies. Where we really were unable to agree was over the hotel. That was the primary issue, was the addition of the hotel into the, into the buildings program. The community board, if I could, you know, summarize their position, they're worried about traffic. They thought the hotel would generate a lot of traffic and the traffic is congested and that wasn't the right use. They said that they previously supported the project without the hotel because it was a residential building primarily and it would not generate a lot of traffic. So I just want to give you guys two responses to what the community board said. Number one, this was never a quiet residential site. The RKO Keith Theater had 3,000 seats. It, it was described often as a movie palace, not as a movie theater. And in its designation report, the Landmarks Preservation Commission noted that the site is located at the major intersection in downtown Flushing and has a history as a major entertainment center for Flushing and the surrounding region. So it was a regional destination, not a quiet residential site. It never was. Speaking for the ownership now, the need for the hotel, as simply as I can put it in, I'm not an economist, is that in order to finance the project, these days now, they need a mix of uses. They need residential, they need commercial, and they need community facility. Otherwise, the project is not going to be financeable because the market changes quickly. And if one use is down, at least there's another use to pick it up. So the hotel was added in to ensure the financeability of the project. This doesn't make any good to get a project approved and not be able to build it. And I would also note that we think the hotel is massive right use in this district, in the C22 district. We think it meets, meets the distance requirements from the major highways and will be glad to submit on that point. So let me just end by saying the follow, following. ZIN was one of the first Chinese companies, real estate developers, to enter the US market. It is listed on the New York Stock Exchange and has been on the stock exchange since 2007. It has developed, I think I said this already, pardon my age, about 200 million square feet of gross floor area worldwide. And the two projects it has successfully developed in New York City to date. They have proven they are very serious about building this project. And I just want to. And I just want to end by quoting what the Chair of Community Board Seven said in a New York Times article in 2019. And I quote, he said, "Every developer that came before us was playing games, looking to flip it or slap up some building real fast. Everyone took their profit and moved on. This project, Zen's project, is the only one who really wants to develop it." Okay, so thank you for for hearing me out. David?
With the board's permission, Randy Gerner of GKV would like to go through the project, the building design and the proposed plans with you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you very much for your your time tonight. I'm sorry it's such a long day, I unfortunately know that you're used to these long days. But I thought I'd like to walk you through the the project and answer some of the concerns that we noted in the in the in your prior deliberations. I just would like to make sure that you can see my screen. Does that work?
We can see your Sahara.
Okay, good, that's good, then I'll then I'll start the the PowerPoint portion of the presentation. Well, what we did is, as you know, we prepared the design for a proposed mixed-use building that was a rather complicated series or complicated program for the project. And we're you, we're utilizing as-of-right uses that include residential, community facilities, and commercial uses, including a hotel, restaurant, and and a retail component. The the project is located at what I think of as the heart of downtown Flushing, the intersection of Main Street and Northern Boulevard, as you can see here. And it is quite adjacent to the on and off ramps for the the Van Wick, has direct access to the White Stone Expressway. And a bit further down also, it has access to the Grand Central Parkway. Public transportation includes the terminal stop for the number seven subway, as well as Long Island Railroad Station not far from here, and scores of bus lines also start and and pass through this this area. The site is located in an R6 zoning designation with a C2-2 commercial overlay. The original building was designed by Thomas Lamb as an atmospheric theater and was opened in 1928. I'd like you to notice, though, from this historic photo, that there really are two components to the building. There is a portion which forms the the street wall, which is detailed with a great deal of flourish. And then there is the auditorium house, which is set back from the street. And very little design attention was paid to that, it's basically a functional building to house the the auditorium. The the interior portion of the landmark was designed as a Spanish Baroque revival. And there are two components of the original theater that were landmarked in 1984, which include the ticket lobby and the grand foyer, which you which you see here. So this is an early photo of the western staircase. And this is a photograph of the eastern staircase. Over the years, as you know, the building was abandoned and closed in 1986. It was then partially demolished by the owner at that time. And quite frankly, the challenge that ownership had, and we as the designer and architect, was, well, what do we do with this spectacular space? Previous applications for the restoration of this portion of the building. And as you will remember, use this space more as a passage for condominium residents to enter the condominium condominium building, but also did allow for the public to view the interior. However, it didn't really have a very functional use. And and after it was all said and done, I think one of the reasons that we focused on on this interior was similar to a project we designed for the Beekman Hotel, which is in downtown Manhattan, where I was the architect. And we had an equally notable in in New York interior. And the space really functions as a hugely successful successful space, as a bar, a restaurant, and a hotel lobby. In fact, this has become the inspiration for the restoration of the Grand foyer and ticket lobby. This project did include a new 600-foot tower that was designed in baton brute, which is exposed cast-in-place concrete. And the entire project, including the restoration and the new tower, won the Project of the Year Award from the Urban Land Institute several years ago. So we have a great deal of experience, I'd like to assure Madam Chair, in understanding exposed board-and-place concrete and how to effectively deal with it. We are in the process of, we've prepared BIM documents for the landmark portion of the building. And we have had continuous conversations with LPC regarding regarding this. We are, we have superseded the original architect on the project and now are are both the design architect and architect of record, as well as that for the landmark portion of the building. We have prepared an extensive set of restoration drawings for for the project, submitted them to LPC. We've we've received some early comments from them. And and basically, they're they're very negligible in in nature. This is a photo of the entrance to the the former auditorium. And then just a side-by-side comparison of the historic eastern staircase and and balconies and that from our BIM drawing. So we are working very, very carefully with LPC, trying to answer all of their concerns. And so that has been key to our development. And I guess for the first time, you can see, these are the 3D drawings of the ticket booth area, which is the the first historic interior that you pass through as you enter the building. As mentioned earlier, we are very actively involved with Evergreen Architectural Arts, and they are doing the restoration portion of the project. They were also the restoration, involved in the restoration of the Beekman Hotel. We have a great deal of faith in them and they are, their work is meticulous, as you can see here. And in fact, these photos and updates are sent monthly to LPC to demonstrate that we're conforming to their their needs and requirements. I thought I'd first start with a massing diagram that explains some of the complexity of the building. As you noted, we have a very complex program. And we do have rather limited street frontage for the project. Northern Boulevard provides us the majority of the street frontage. There is a very small passage that we have, only 16 feet of width on Farrington Street. And so then what we're doing is we're depending upon the Northern Boulevard portion of the site to provide access and entry to the residences, to an access point and to a retail space, access point to the restaurant that we intend for the for the landmark interiors, and access point for a hotel, for the hotel, and an access point for community facility, as well as an access point to the parking garage and the port-cochere, which I'll explain to you shortly as to how that works. Then directly above the podium portion of the building, you'll notice that we refer to some of the ideas of Thomas Lamb originally, where we we maintain a street wall for the podium portion of the building, set the upper portion of the building back. And what we've done is we've created two rather large interior courtyards. The courtyards are the focal point for the guest rooms, which look into that courtyard. And they are also the focal point for the interior residences as they look down onto the street as well. We anticipate this to be a very large landscaped garden. And similarly, on the back of the building, we're doing the same thing, where we carved out a large interior courtyard as well. And we're doing that same thing with respect to the residences and hotel guest rooms that appear on the rear of the building. The hotel is designated in this green color. And the the yellow portion of the building that you see here designates the 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 residences. The open space, though we have a great deal of open space by almost any measure, I know that came up in some of your questions and I think we'll try to explain a little bit of that and how we how we determined we needed a waiver for that. In section, you'll notice that the landmark section is shown in the color blue. And this is the portion of the building that we're anticipating will be our bar and restaurant. A destination restaurant is is in fact our goal. One of the waivers we're seeking is to allow dining and the restaurant space to also be located on the second floor because in fact, the landmark is a three-and-a-half-story-high portion of our building. And the second floor and ground floor are connected. And so logically, it makes perfect sense to extend the restaurant portion of the building to the second floor to include that because of the grand stairs that I had shown you earlier. Then I'd like to point out, we don't have a majority of the building built over the landmark. You noted earlier in your comments that we are in fact limiting the the weight of the building over the landmark by creating the courtyard that I showed you previously to this. So there is no structure other than two sections of community facility, which were similar to the sections of the original building that were in place, that were built over the landmark. Now, there the comment came up regarding long-span structure. The landmark itself is is very wide where the dome is. And we're dependent on that long-span structure, which is going to be in this section here that you see where we have this this X, to support the, not only the outdoor space, the open space that is a requirement for the project, but also the dome of the of the structure itself for the or the ceiling of of the landmark portion. Going down into the cellar level, what we've, what we're required to do is we're required to have a cellar level that is deep enough to have our points of entry for our mechanical systems, which are located directly off of the street here. And we've chosen not to ask for a parking waiver because the community board made it very clear to us that parking was at a premium in Flushing. And and so we're not asking for a parking waiver as previous applicants may have done. But instead, what we're choosing to do is to provide the amount of parking that's required for the space for the building. And and by doing so, what we need to do is we need to excavate to this level and for the parking, as well as the mechanical level. And and then all around the the footings of the of the landmark. And so then it just became clear to us that it's best to in fact drop the entire floor to the level that's required to satisfy our needs for parking and mechanical space and points of entry and circulation around the landmark. So that's that's the reason that we had undertaken that. And the other, in order to achieve the parking level requirement, we were asking for a waiver that for rear yard waiver to allow parking in this section of the building, again, so that we can meet our parking numbers because we felt it so important that we provide enough parking to satisfy all of the components of of the building. So then directly above the parking level and on the wings adjacent to the landmark, we have the guest room locations on floors four through seven. And then on floors eight through 16, we are have located all of the residences. The height of the building is exactly the same height as previous applications. The defined FAA maximum height in previous applications was 211 feet, and we we match that. We have calculated the correct height of the bulkhead based on our elevator consultant saying that this is the type of height of the overrun we need to satisfy the elevating systems in the building. And perhaps the prior application might not have calculated the required overrun for the for the elevators. So that is how the building appears in section. And what we've done is we've designated and shown you the areas required for each of the different components of the space. And so I thought I'd now explain our thoughts with respect to our entryway. First, I'd like to focus on the port-cochere. In order to take traffic off of Northern Boulevard as quickly as possible, the community board made it clear that they were very concerned about traffic building up. So what we did is we introduced a port-cochere with a a large queuing space available. And we situated the parking portion of the building in the back of the building. The port-cochere does quite a few things for us. It takes traffic off the street for a variety of uses, including our truck dock, which we have two truck docks located here, we're not requesting a waiver for these as well. Port-cochere is is considered a decorative space and an important space for the building. It'll have high-quality finishes in it. And it allows us to provide a drop-off for the restaurant. It allows us to provide a drop-off for the residential component. We have places protected for ADA vans as well. It provides us with a drop-off also for the hotel component. The the hotel entrance is located here. And we are seeing that that this will be a jump elevator that will take you one story to the level above. And this is indicative of a staircase, not a ramp. Although I have to apologize, it does read as a ramp, but it it certainly isn't a ramp. It's a it's a sculptural stair that is meant to surround surround the elevator. As far as we, we will be able to accommodate small vans and type-A school buses within the space as well. We do have the truck docks for 33 foot of depth and 12 foot of width, so we meet that criteria. And you'll, there were some comments with respect to Farrington Street. You'll notice that the width of our Farrington Street portion of the site, because this is, there are party wall buildings located adjacent to this, we only have 14 feet, 7 inches of of width to exit anything or bring anything into the building. So we're using this for pedestrian and back-of-house entryways and egress. And our intention is to finish this as a handsome building, even though it would just be a facade that is, or a portion of the building that's meant to be very much a secondary facade, or excuse me, a secondary entrance to the building. But our intention is to to finish this correctly and and make this a, you know, contributing building to to the to the street as well. Okay, and then as far as other uses are concerned, you can see this is the residential lobby. This is the entry to the retail that takes you down to the stair below. The restaurant is served by a finishing kitchen. There is a jump elevator that takes you down to a prep kitchen on the floor below. And of course, the hotel entrance, which I mentioned earlier, as well as the community facility entrance. And then we do have a variety of other egress points that come out of the building, as you can see here. And that that is for exit capacity. Our cellar level I mentioned is, excuse me, our cellar level is a place where we're bringing in all of our points of service for the building. is a place where we're bringing in all of our points of service for the building. And we did, were required to excavate this portion of the, of the site to satisfy our parking requirement. We, and the only portion of the site that you see here dotted line where the landmark is above was left, so we felt it was just, just as, as well that we excavate the entire floor so that the entire floor is at the same level. And we thought that that was the, the best approach to, to take to regarding the, the floor level. On the second floor, I mentioned, we were looking for a waiver to allow us to have dining on the second floor because what we're doing is we're clustering the restaurant component, similar to what we did at the Beacon, where we have private dining rooms and that are accessible via the staircases, the grand staircases that are within the existing landmark. We've reviewed these plans with LPC. They are fine. They, they applaud the idea of, or maybe applaud is too strong a word, but they think it is appropriate, that's the word LPC likes to use, to, to locate a, a restaurant component on the second floor. We also anticipate that we will have our main lobby for the hotel here. And then the hotel elevators are located in this location, which are then accessed from the hotel lobby. So a jump elevator takes you up one story to the check-in area, security point. And then guests will use this secure elevator then to take them to the hotel floors. There is a service elevator that services all the floors in the building as well. And I pointed out the community's service entrance and there, so the portion of the building that faces Northern Boulevard, there is a component of the community facility here. The, the community board did voice some opinion with respect to the amount of community facility space. And I think we have some sketches in our back pocket where what we might do is remove this community facility space from this floor and to reduce the amount of community facility space to satisfy perhaps future concerns that the the community board has. We haven't made these changes to our drawings for you yet because we were waiting for this, the submission, but that is sort of on, on the back burner. And then the third floor plan is more parking in the rear and community facility space on, on the third floor. Similarly, the fourth floor has community facility space, and this is where we introduce our first floor of guest rooms that are all around a very large inner court. A minimum size inner court is thirty feet by forty feet according to zoning. But this inner court is much, much larger. It's seventy-nine feet across by fifty-four feet across. So this is, you know, a very large portion of the, of the space, which is which is the outdoor space. And then when we go up to the fifth floor plan, what happens is we're now introducing the outer court that you see here. Again, this is, you know, a very, very large space, seventy-nine feet across again, and even deeper in, in its width. And this faces south all, and one of the questions I think, Madam Chair, you had is how are we integrating the residential garden with the hotel? We're showing a series of enclosures around the hotel room so that there will be some exterior space for the guest rooms directly off of the guest room. We're using this space as, as residential and component, and that's accessed via a residential elevator that is located in this area. And the, and we also have residential amenity space located here so that the residences then will have direct access to the residential garden that you see. And, and when we calculated the open space requirement, that was based upon a height factor ratio of somewhere in the eight neighborhood range. And that would require an open space requirement that is in fact larger than our entire site. So that is what is forcing us to request a waiver for open space. But as you can see, in general terms, the amount of open space that we're showing in this project is, is quite substantial. As we go up to the sixth floor, it's still a hotel floor.
Randy?
Yes?
Chair, did you have a question? Madam Chair?
Yeah, well, I have so many, so many questions, but um, how could the height factor require more open space than your site?
Yeah, I know, we were shocked by that too. I can go into that a bit later if you don't mind. We do have a slide that demonstrates that and, and, and quite frankly, it's, it's challenging, but we'll show you.
So, you know, this has to do with my question before. If you had an as of right project, and you do have an as of right project unless it's not as of right, right? It's assuming the non-compliant condition of the theater below. And, or let's just say you were building on top of the theater. Would you be allowed to build on top of the theater with a non-compliant condition and taking advantage of the of all of the floor area as of right, or a lot of the floor area as of right? I mean, don't forget that you're creating this enormous time FAR building. That's when it becomes FAR. So it's not that, it's, it's because you're asking for so much additional floor area, obviously, you're not creating an adequate amount of open space because the height factor doesn't allow you to have that much floor area, right? It tops out at whatever it is, two point four three or something, right?
Let's see, we'll go to the Well, excuse me, I'm just moving ahead in our open space. Okay, so the proposed open space for a residential portion of the building does not meet the requirements for open space for an open space ratio contrary to this. And so with our calculation based on the, the the number of residences we have and the amount of area, we're calculating a height factor of eight point seven three. And the open space requirement would be fifty-five thousand square feet bigger than our entire site based upon that because of the request for additional zoning floor area for residential.
Right, so, but the question is, what would be the required open space if you were building an as of right building or the largest building that you could have on site that still meets the open space requirements? So it seems like you have far too little open space on this site that it, and that part of the, the problem, right? So it's too little by kind of any measure. And, and I'm trying to sort of back into what is the, the least amount of waiver for open space that would still get you a viable building? I mean, you're asking for an enormous amount of floor area, and then, of course, that forces an enormous amount of open space reduction, so.
Some ways, we've used the previous applications which had many more you, square feet of open space than we're showing here. We've reduced the number of units by close to a hundred units of housing. And the previous applications that we were using as a guide had asked for a similar waiver, but actually probably were asking for a much, you know, for a much bigger waiver than we are in fact even. Because a good portion of, we're, we have the same amount of FAR as, as previous applications. But now a good portion of our building is dedicated to hotel where there is no open space requirement. So if I might ask to further clarify this with, with David and Howard in, in a written response, I'd appreciate it.
I, I understand. We'll, we'll respond in writing and we'll address the issue of the as of right and the open space requirement under the as of right.
I would just say, Madam Chair, that the as of right residential FAR, I think, is two point four, two point four three or three under quality housing. And that is, you know, it's just simply not a viable option for, for preserving the landmark.
Now, I'm not saying that an as of right building is the building, right? But I'm saying that there's some, this is the part where all of the commissioners are like, well, we see you have an A. Probably have some kind of a B, but we don't know what the amount of the B is. But we really don't know what the minimum variance is, right? And so I'm trying to understand that the scope of the waiver is very large. And so, and, and there is a, a dearth of open space in this community. And so I see, I see building footprint over a very large portion of this site. And I wonder, what if you didn't cover as much as you're covering with building? Like, for example, what if you took away, just to throw it out, like, rather than, I don't know what letter that is, it's like a DC, right? Rather than a DC, what if this was an I-beam? That doesn't have that closed courtyard there. Then you'd have more open space. What if you're, you have on the fifth floor, the courtyard in both directions, right? Yeah, like that, but at all the floors or at the first floor available.
This is actually the residential component of the, of, of the building now. And it is the I that, that intuition led you to, and that same intuition led us to this direction.
Right, but you don't qualify for open space if your residential isn't at the same level as the open space, right? At some point, you've got to get the residents at the level of the open space. And right now, for example, you have the hotel at the level of the open space, which isn't really the same thing because they're having, it's a, it's a bizarre relationship to have the residents sort of be there in front of hotel partitions where it means all the hotel, this hotel is looking down at the residents. I, I find that quite uncomfortable. So, yeah, anyway. I mean, there were a lot of questions that we brought up in the review session, and there was no way that we can really go back and forth with each of them. That's just one of my, my, the question is, how do you show us that the amount of open space waiver that you're asking for isn't more than you and is reasonable? Because a lot of the things that you're saying, Mr. Gerner, are really, as, as Commissioner Chivetta said, their wants as opposed to necessarily needs, right? So for example, this idea of the restaurant on the second floor sounds like nothing, but we're in the variance business. And you have to show that absent a second floor waiver for the restaurant, the building can't make a reasonable return on the investment. That's going to be tricky, right? And I'm not saying it isn't super nice to have those rooms on the next, on that floor, but maybe there's another way, you know, like make it associated with the hotel or, or something. I'm not sure exactly how, how you, right? The residents have to sit on top of the la, the commercial and you're allowed to have a hotel. So maybe the, the, maybe the restaurant is, or the second floor rooms are accessory to the hotel. And then I don't think, I don't think you have a problem with the supplemental use regulation, so maybe that's.
That's, you know, and we've been, we've been debating that amongst ourselves as well. So we, I take your comment with, you know, and that we'd like to integrate that into our supplement, supplement, you know, into our continuing discussions.
Okay, why don't you continue because, you know, I have three hours.
I, I'm sorry, so I'm just, I'll just quickly go through the floor plans, which are all the residential plans. But then I wanted to speak about the, the facade of the building, the original facade of the building. I'm born and raised in Queens, and this was the go-to theater for my family on Saturday evenings. I remember seeing John Wayne and True Grit here with my grandfather. And I always had a special, best special part of my heart was always for, for this theater. And so as we started to develop the design, I realized that this was a really important component of downtown Flushing. It was a signature building. So the building, of course, was, it was damaged for the last thirty years and, and we couldn't save the facade, but we chose to replicate the facade and pretty much adapt all of the characteristics of the original facade to this new replica of, of the facade, which acts as the base and podium of our building. So that, what happens is this feels very much like the, the original building. In fact, we're using a limestone precast to, to create the facade. And I'm going to pass through our waivers because you're very familiar with the waivers at this point. And I think they require more detailed discussions. But really, in conclusion, the design of the building was meant to feel familiar. And it was based, our base design really will be a limestone, a limestone precast or precast concrete meant to look like limestone. And we're replicating the ornamentation of the building. The tower portion of the building will be a baton brute. It will be a decorative concrete. And as I had said, we have a number of award-winning projects that were designed in detail throughout New York City as, as baton brute, and we're very familiar with its expressions and its capabilities. And our goal is to match the precast concrete in color and tone, but not in pattern. We want this to appear as if it's related to the original building, but we've set it back from the primary facade, just as the original architect did, so that it has a separate and standalone expression, and the street wall is still true to, to Flushing.
Thank you. I just want to go back to the, I had a chance to get back to section thirty-five dash thirty-three, a design resolution, which has to do with the location of open space. I made a reference to that before. That section says that in a C two, which this is, the open space required for a residential building or the residential portion of a mixed building under thirty-five thirty-two may be at a level higher than twenty-three feet above curb level. Such open space may be provided at ground floor level or upon the roof of the non-residential portion of a mixed building, a commercial building or a community facility building. So yours would be A, the non-residential portion of the mixed building, provided that the level of any open space may not be higher than two feet, six inches below the sill level of any legally required window opening on such roof in the residential portion of such mixed building. So your hotel is in the way, is in the, on the wrong floor. That's part of what I was talking about, and there's, that's, the reasoning is kind of obvious that you're not supposed to go down to another floor to get to the residential open space. So what you're effectively doing is asking for another waiver, which you didn't list. And I don't know how to justify that way. So, right, so I'm just throwing that out for more food for analysis for you guys, okay?
Thank you.
Is there somebody else?
Yeah. Pardon me. So again, having, Randy, having gone through that and also try not to belabor too much of this, just, just to recap, you're going through the chair's comments and some of the other comments. We will provide, we'll substantiate the open space and try and think about how to improve our open space ratio. We'll provide you with verification that we are as of right in the C two two for the hotel use. We will submit our obsolescence argument and clean up our findings such that we are no longer relying on previous, previous findings by the board related to this site. The, what I'd like to accomplish tonight before we leave, in addition to addressing any questions that anyone else has and they would like to address now, is to make sure that we understand Commissioner Oatley Brown's concerns and that Jack Freeman has a chance to respond to them. I'd like to do that next. And then with the board's permission, I'd like to just confirm that I understand Commissioner Shadd's points. I believe I do understand them. But since we'll be responding to them in writing, I'd like to go over them once before we, before we move on. And then, of course, any other questions from the board. So with your permission, it's Commissioner Oatley Brown. So with your permission, Commissioner Oatley Brown, if we could address some of your concerns or make sure we understand your concerns, that we can address them properly in writing.
Okay.
So I'll turn this over.
Okay. Yeah, I listened to the comments that were raised and actually it's good to be back and have somebody to talk to. In terms of the concerns that you raised, Commissioner Oatley Brown, I think what we'll try to do is take a look at the hotel STR report and bring it up to a date just prior to the pandemic, which would bring it to the last quarter of 2019. I think thereafter, you run into problems where the occupancy rates and the income levels are affected by the, the virus. So we'll do that. I think that will help address your concerns. You brought up a cap rate function. I, I want to point out that you don't use the cap rate in determining the value of condominiums. The value of the condominiums is the sales proceeds from the sale of condominiums. We use the 6% cap rate because the income-producing components, which are the hotel, a small amount of retail and parking are all uses which do not bring with them a cap rate lower than 6%. And we felt we were being aggressive using a 6% cap rate because hotels, for the most part, have cap rates that are in the 8% to 9% range, generally unrelated to anything that's going on with.
Right, but doesn't, I, I just have a question about that. Doesn't the fact that those specific uses are in a mixed-use building that is characterized like being a mixed-use residential building have any impact on pushing that, that hotel slash retail cap rate down? Or should it be considered as if it is freestanding?
We, we did bring it down. In other words, if the indicators are that a hotel has a cap rate of 8%, we brought it down to 6%. And then the retail is a small component. Parking has a, does not have a
Right.
small cap rate. So we tried to actually be aggressive in bringing the cap rate down. And we thought that 6% was appropriate. And I think that your reference to a 5.37% for residential, of all the other uses here are 6%, I think that that was a reasonable cap rate. So we'll try to make that argument in, in the documents we follow up with. I think you also asked us to look at the difference between the average price of the comparables and the prices we use for the condominiums in the stacking plan. We'll do that and we'll get back to you. And then I think all the commissioners had the issue of what the E-finding is. Is this the minimum return? So we'll have to figure out a way to talk about that. But I think your principal concerns are, we can easily address those. And I think the chair had some concerns about the annualized return. We wanted to just reminder that the returns we're showing are annualized returns and the return on a total project is what's reflected. In both cases, we show the total profit and the annualized profit. And I think that in my experience, I, I can't imagine that people are telling you that a 1% return is something you can bring to the bank. I think that a 5% return, a five and a half percent return is a pretty low return. That's perfectly reasonable to consider that a minimum return. And we'll discuss that further. That's, that's pretty much it.
It might be helpful to talk about that residential, well, the project return in comparison to safe, safer investments to show that why would somebody invest in something as risky as real estate when you could put your money in a T-bill and get more than the 1% per year?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'd be glad to do that. I'll, I'll incorporate that. But this is just a reminder, it's a complicated project. It has numerous sources of the return. And some of them are adjusted and calculated with a capitalization rate. And some of them are just the direct result of the income that you get when you sell a product, which in this case, the product are condominium apartments.
Thank you.
Look forward to reading it.
Okay, I can't wait.
Before we move on to some follow-up with Commissioner Sheta, I did forget to ask Chair, if, just to qualify, clarify. You had mentioned the 7479 transfer mechanism and factoring that into our analysis. We don't believe that a 7479 is applicable to an interior landmark within a building that's to, to be demolished. And that said, we did do an analysis of the, there are 18 sites on the block and two on the other block that are potential receiving sites. Would you like us to submit an analysis of sort of why those potential receiving sites? Assuming, arguing though that 7479 applies to an interior landmark, why those, why those don't work?
Yes, if it's true that they don't work. But, you know, the idea of the 7479 is that you're being compensated for your incredible continuing maintenance plan. This interior landmark has an incredible continuing maintenance plan, right? And so it would seem quite odd to me that the landmark, that the city planning commission wouldn't allow a 7479 transfer where you're spending $8 million to preserve a very extraordinary interior landmark structure. So it probably does apply. So if there are no receiving sites, that's another thing that, that are called adjacent sites, according to how defined in the landmarks. I would just assume that 7479 applies unless you get a letter from city planning that says it doesn't apply, which they probably have never thought about.
Right, so we, we certainly found no instance in which it, it did apply. But, you know, because of the 20% cap on the, on the transfer to the developments or to the granted receiving sites, we did look at all the potential sites and we concluded that they didn't. But we'll put that to you in writing. I just wanted to make sure that I understood the question and we'll, we'll get it back to you. So thank you for, for raising that. And I, I'm going to now just, just make sure that we understand. Commissioner Sheta, we appreciate your, your, your comments. It seems to me that you were really pointing us in the direction that we need to better substantiate how our, the landmark superstructure and the cellar slab relate to our hardship, right? You're, you're questioning, so I understand it. You're, you're questioning the elements that we are claiming as hardships related to the, the interior landmark. And I want to make sure that we understand your questions so we can respond to it properly in writing.
I just want to add, it's not the questioning of the interior landmark. It's questioning construction methodology related to the non-landmark part, right? So that's related to even to questions I said, why in the world are you excavating underneath the landmark? It sounds like such a terrible idea on so many levels. Not for me as a former landmarks commissioner, I'd be like shuddering. Why are you undermining my landmark? And then the other part of it is, it sounds like so much money for the project to suffer that kind of additional excavation when it's not necessary. That, that's one. And so, and then the other part of it is, the prior case, the prior variance didn't require any kind of waiver of rear yard. And it, I think, applied, supplied all the parking that was necessary. And I think one of the reasons maybe you have more parking is you also have community facility that's assumed to be ambulatory care and maybe more, and the hotel. And so maybe what you're doing is you're upping the amount of required parking because of the new use, which is an option. It's not necessarily a requirement, right?
So just, oh, sorry, forgive me.
Can I butt in, David, for a sec? I, I mean, our, our basic is that without a mixed-use project, forget it. It's not, it's not financeable. So the various components are required.
So, but what is doing, a lot of it is driving the waivers, right? So if you have few hotel rooms, maybe you need therefore less parking. Or if you had less community facility, for sure you would need less parking because ambulatory care has a major parking demand as opposed to a senior center that probably didn't have a major parking demand, right? So all of those things are coming together, requiring way more parking, therefore excavation that you didn't have in the prior case and therefore rear yard waiver request that you didn't have in the prior case, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Got it.
Just to, we, we understand and we'll, we'll respond, but just to make sure that we're all on the same page. The, the, the 2015 approval, which is the last, the last approved plan, there were 385 parking spaces provided, and that was with a waiver. There was actually a higher parking demand with the previous project. This project, I believe it's 329 spaces are required and those are, those are all being accommodated by the design. We heard from the community board repeatedly that the parking issue was sort of paramount. And so we, we, we worked to address it and not require a parking waiver. We thought that that waiver might just sort of be foreboding. And as for the, the, the rear yard waiver, you know, it's tricky. Our parking structure is below 23 feet, but zoning requires a waiver for 23 feet or more than one story. We've managed to fit the three stories of the parking structure under the 23 feet, but because it's, it counts stories as well as height, we were here for the waiver. So we felt that was sort of a lesser waiver than what we had asked for before. But again, to your point, you're, you and Commissioner Sheta have identified two things in particular that add cost to the project and we need to explain why they're related to the landmarks. The, the structural steel element, which we have Boris Haida here, if there are any questions about his letter, that's required because it is, in addition to sort of the foundation of the space above the landmark, it's holding up the landmark dome. And we, we believe that that is integral to the landmark rehabilitation and is therefore an essential component. It is not, it is not, we believe respectfully, it is not a want, but, but a need. The parking structure, my understanding, and I, as everyone on this call knows, I am not an engineer. Because we are accommodating the parking, the full parking requirement and because that requires dropping the rear cellar, my impression was that it was, and, and we have to drop the front of the cellar at Northern Boulevard for the utilities, that it was, the creation of a uniform cellar was an engineering choice. It wasn't a programmatic choice. And that that is what's requiring the underpinning of the landmark. Smarter people than me will help me put this back to you in writing and really establish that. But Commissioner Sheta, are there other points of emphasis and cost that you would like us to address beyond those two? To, to my mind, those are the two that you were identifying and we want to make sure we speak to them. Was there something else specifically that you wanted us to address in writing to you in the cost estimate?
I, I believe the two, the two driving elements is the excavation in the cellar, the extra excavation. My point is that the, the cellar is already excavated. Why do you need to excavate more? You have to explain that because this is dumping tons of cost to your construction cost. This is element one. Element two is, like I said, you're bridging over the existing landmark. You're using this very special roofing structure. Why? Is it just for the garden? You just mentioned that you're going to use this structure to support the landmark, the existing landmark roofing. How is that is going to be done? Is the current structure unsafe and you need to strengthen it? Isn't it better to do that from inside? You already have that interior open. You could, you could do whatever now instead of building that very expensive structure and saying that you're going to use it to support the landmark. These, these are my like key points and I need them to be addressed.
Thank you.
Okay, I just want to go back to the parking. I'm looking at the previously approved set. So it's the 2015 set that was supplied to us in the application materials. They didn't get, they built, their parking garage is 23 feet. It's, it's less, lower than 23 feet above grade. So it fits within and it's a single level. It looks like they're using an intense number of parking stackers. That's the only thing I can think of. But they also don't have, if I got this right, they don't really have more than the existing cellar level in that. So why is that project, that version of cellar not adequate? You said it's more parking than there was, that, than you're proposing now. I don't have time to figure out if it's more parking and I see Mr. Habib watching. I, I don't have time to figure out if it's more parking spaces. He said it's more parking spaces than you're even proposing here. And it's all being done with probably like some kind of special parking system all within the 23 feet below, above grade and only one story. So that's the other thing. So this one didn't require any waivers for that. And it seems like it wasn't even doing a lot of excavation or even any excavation. Could be wrong, but that's what I'm seeing really quickly superficially looking at the, the drawings from 2015.
If, if, if there are any other ideas that could eliminate the need for the excavation in the existing cellar, like using rooftop parking or something like that, and you eliminate that excavation, it's going to save the project tons of money. My, my point is, is it worth like exploring that idea? I believe it is.
We hear you and we will do so. Thank you.
And, and, and just to be clear, Chair, please, at the end of this process, if we're going to grant something, I'm going to ask to condition the grant on the configuration of the proposed construction. Meaning that if we find out that no extra excavation is, is done, the variance is gone. If we find out that the underpinning is not done, if that scope changes, if the scope that's presented to us changes at the end, impacting the construction cost, it's going to be totally different gate. The variance will be a risk. I want to make that crystal clear.
Okay, let's cross that proverbial bridge when we get there and not. So I, I do want to say that the preservation of this landmark is very important. So I want to make sure that we have a project that preserves the landmark. But at the same time, to kind of, to answer these questions and reduce the scope of the waivers as much as we can because it seems like there are a lot of wants as opposed to needs. And especially because we have these other projects that were designed by very experienced architects. So this was not like fly-by-night architects who threw some things out, right? That seemed to have approached it in another way. And I'm trying to understand why you can't approach it in the same way for, with respect to those things and avoid those waivers and perhaps that expense, right?
So. It's a good question. And, and from where I sit, none of those projects ever got built. I mean, that's, we have to deal with that. The owner has to deal with that.
Mr. Goldman in, with, represented them and you represented them as, as truth to this board that that was what was needed for a minimum variance to afford relief. We can't ignore that, okay? By the way, they made sense at the time, right? So to, to back off from them and say, but they don't make sense anymore, it's a little, it's a little hard, right?
Quick example, without getting too far into this. The automated parking system that was contemplated previously. Our advice is that it's not, it wasn't viable. It wasn't a feasible system. I don't know about parking. I just know what, what clients tell me.
That's Mr. Habib's job, so we'll leave that to him and to talk about it.
I agree.
And Vice Chair Ha, has her hand up.
I have a very simple, I have a very simple ask. I think it would be helpful, definitely it would be helpful from, for me and maybe for the other commissioners. If, if you can provide a table that shows what was approved in the prior BSA approval, what were the previous waivers, what were the asks compared to what you're asking now? So at least we can compare, okay, previously for residential, you had 300 parking spaces. Now you're providing this, the waivers that was, you know, so it would be easy to do side-by-side comparison. I mean, and of course you will have your narratives and all of that, but it would be, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're, we're looking at that now, Commissioner Sheta, but we don't have the requested waivers included in this table and we will submit it to you with the requested waivers. You know what? I, I should have put that in the papers. I apologize. That makes a lot of sense.
Okay, great. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, all right, uh, lots of, so, you know, to save time, our review session was really, really long and detailed. As you know, Mr. Schnackenberg, just go through every single statement made and make sure there's an answer to it and where there's a modification to the project to respond, like, I, you know, the bias of me running the, running the show sort of is I get to push my questions. I have a lot of trouble with the street wall continuity on that little side street and the idea that you've got a dead facade. Dead facades in community, in urban planning and urban design, terrible thing, right? So this idea that you're saying, oh, it's gonna be a pretty dead facade, I, I don't find that sits well. That's actually a commercial strip and it can't be a pretty dead facade, it has to be an active facade, right? And if it has a little fire corridor that goes through it, fine, but you can't have the whole thing be dead on a commercial street that really relies on action, activity, right? That, that's just one of many, but, but you do need to go through all the, all the questions, comments, and, um, be responsive. And I, I would have to say that in kind of preparation for the next hearing, the answers can't always be, um, the reasons why we can't change it. The answers have to be change. If, if there's pushback, you have to pursue change. The drawings that you have are not the final drawings. They're a set of drawings on paper, that's all, okay?
We understand.
Okay, good. Um, anything else? Anybody else want to add anything?
Um, Madam Chair, I'm picking up on your idea. I didn't pay attention to the Farrington Street frontage. I, I think given that Farrington Street roof is very much accessible from the hotel lobby area, maybe you can use that space for some kind of like amenity space, uh, uh, that can be used by the hotel and, and take away some of the other, uh, features, uh, that hotel, uh, uses, using on the other floors and reduce the floor area, something like that, or provide a grand suite there, uh, you know, something to that effect.
Good.
We're just stopping this. We will, we will do so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good. All right, so I'd like to go to the public, though I don't see anybody in the waiting room. I'd like to go to the public. Go ahead, Tony.
This case is item number thirty, twenty twenty forty-five BZ and one twenty-seven fifteen BZ, one thirty-five dash thirty-five Northern Boulevard, Queens.
So she's so tired, she can't even remember the next part of the job.
I'm sorry. You want to call in, six four six five five eight eight six five six. Zoom webinar ID is nine nine eight two seven eight zero one two seven four. And if you're in the Zoom room already, please raise your hand to speak. Your Zoom hand to speak.
Where's my Zoom hand?
Okay, let's see a Zoom hand. I don't see any Zoom hands up.
Where's my hand?
Your hand is, uh, in the low, on the bottom, lower, lower right-hand side.
It's a yellow, it's an R, a yellow thing, isn't it?
I don't see, I, I got participant share screen record. I'm not leaving. I've been waiting too long.
Oh, wait, you got participant share screen. Who's speaking anyway?
Brendan Levy, I'm with the Queens Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, why don't you speak? Because you raised your proverbial hand.
That's right, I raised my physical hand. Thank you very much. And, and, uh, I'm here on behalf of Tom Gretch, the president and CEO of the Queens Chamber in support of this project. So, uh, let me read the letter into the record. Dear Chair, Pro Mutter, writing you in these extremely challenging economic times to express the Chamber's wholehearted support for the application by Queens Theatre Owner LLC for BSA variance at one thirty-five thirty-five Northern Boulevard, Flushing. Property owners are proposing a mixed-use project at the site, the former RKO Keats Flushing Theater. Project of this scale will create approximately two hundred and sixty-eight permanent jobs and over nine hundred temporary jobs to the construction site at a time when Queens is desperate, in desperate need of economic stimulus. Development at the site has been stalled so many times over the years, uh, but this owner, Shinwan Real Estate, brings critical financial commitment and wherewithal to the project. As you well know, the site poses unique challenges as an interior landmark. Shin Real Estate traded, is traded on the New York Stock Exchange, uh, Stock Exchange, as you know, has the vision and the capacity to carry out the costly redevelopment of the site. Working closely, um, with LPC, they've already undertaken millions of dollars in preservation work to avoid, to avoid further damage to the landmark. Shinwan and LPC have elected to remove, restore, and reintroduce the more fragile landmark feature as a plan that was secured by a ten million dollar bond and has been implemented pursuant to a schedule and regular progress, uh, and regular progress reports to LPC. Current vision for the project entails a mixed-use development that we believe will fit well into the downtown Flushing area. The proposal includes a sixteen-story mixed-use building with one hundred and seventy-three residential condominium units, a hundred and sixty-two key mid-market hotel, approximately thirty-four thousand feet, square feet of community facility space, and approximately thirteen thousand one hundred square feet of commercial space, plus ten thousand, uh, one hundred and sixty square feet of cellar-level retail and an ample, an ample parking of three hundred and twenty-nine parking spaces. And another bonus for Queens historians, the new, the, the new, uh, design entails replicating and restoring the street skates facade to its historic state. We're particularly excited, uh, for the planned restaurant, which will be located inside the landmarked interior spaces that would, uh, become one of the crown jewels on the Queens dining scene. The Chamber appreciates Shinwan's significant private investment at this site. A hotel in this location makes a lot of sense with the expansion of LaGuardia Airport. The Chamber enthusiastically looks forward to the activation of this long-neglected site as a driver of our local economic recovery in these trying times. Thank you for, for your consideration, and that's signed Thomas Gresh, President, President and CEO of the Queens Chamber. I'm Brendan Levy on the Business Development Manager at the Chamber. I work closely with Tom. I'm a lifelong Queens resident. I too finally remember the, the, I'm, I'm sad to say I'm old enough to remember the original RKO Keats, but, um, it's, it's really been an eyesore. So on a personal note, you know, we're really excited to back this project, so we're in full support. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Is there anybody else who needs help raising their Zoom hand? So you raise your Zoom hand by pressing it, it's on the bottom of your screen on the menu there on the right side. Otherwise, star six to, no, sorry, star nine to raise your Zoom hand on your phone. Okay, I don't see anybody, right? All right then, so you have, you have a lot to do. How much time do you need?
We're gonna need at least a week.
Okay.
You're writing it.
I think, uh, I think that we, you know, we're, we're very concerned about the, uh, citywide hotel special permit, uh, which is, as everyone on this call knows, is going through city planning now, um, that, uh, proposed special permit doesn't have, um, a, a carve-out and the, um, the grandparenting provisions aren't clear, so, uh, we really do want to move the ball as quickly as we can, uh, without, you know, while still addressing all of the board's concerns. So this is our top priority and we'd like to submit, um, you know, I think four weeks is, uh, is our, something that we can, we can accomplish with a lot of work in, in the middle, and we'd like to do that if that's okay with you.
I'm checking with the architect. Randy, is four weeks something you can turn around?
Um, I think David's going to make me turn it around. Um, so the, the...
The worst. What? Say again?
Please, David.
Give me more time, we, we can take it.
Because I recommend you take the time you need because if you end up adjourning, it delays the project because we won't have a slot for you for like another two months or something like that. So you have to take the, take the time you actually need to make the corrections and coordinate with all of the other consultants because I know Mr. Freeman is not gonna make any changes to his analysis until he sees your drawings, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, like all the players, right? So let's, let's do this right.
So why don't we say six weeks, David?
Yeah, I think that's great.
Six weeks for you to turn out your drawings, right?
Certainly, six weeks, yeah. We'll, we'll be able to do that in six weeks.
Then they go to Mr. Freeman for him to make modifications, and they have to go to you and Mr. Schnackenberg and Mr. Goldman for you to review them to make sure, and then maybe Philip Habib gets involved in the story. I don't know, right?
So, uh, we, we hear you, um, we, the, the, uh, this will be a, a near-perfect submission, um, and so we would ask for, uh, eight weeks.
Do I hear ten weeks?
That's a good answer. Right, that's what I wrote already.
I'm reluctant to give up my annuity here, so...
So what I do want to say is also in terms of city planning, I hope you're also going to city planning and asking for some kind of grandparenting or carve-out or something for this project, which you describe as only available to those located in a historic landmark or something like that, right?
We have done so.
We are, we are looking to city planning, um, but we, we sort of, we do, uh, because we don't know what the grandparenting provision looks like, we do feel the need to move as quickly as we can.
Right.
Have you had any discussions with the Queens Borough President's Office?
Um, I believe the ownership has, um, I, we, we have, yes. Lauren, Lauren's on the call, she could, that.
Hi, this is Lauren George, a government relations consultant. Um, and yes, we met with the previous borough president, um, and we also discussed, so it was a transitional time, you know, for the BP. So there, we, we spoke to staff extensively on the project as it's been around a while and they remember.
Something to keep in mind with regards to your approach to city planning for the hotel text, and you have the Chamber of Commerce.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The other thing that I wanted to mention, just in case, in case you think about it, is there you are with this choice morsel of a landmark that entitles you to a seventy-four seven-eleven special permit also, which can waive everything except floor area. So to the extent that we, it's my recollection anyway, but to the extent that there are things that we can't waive or won't waive because you can't make the, the variance, minimum variance findings, city planning might be able to pick, pick those up, right? That's kind of what I'm, and then that would also, they could also waive use, I believe. I mean, waive, yes, they can waive.
Yes, they can waive use as well.
So they can do almost everything. So in the face of your fear about the, um, about the special permit that's coming up, they can, um, also take care of that for you because this is a desirable project. You know, maybe they think this is a desirable project.
Yeah, and that is assuming that landmark, that special permit works for interior. I also have not...
Right.
I'd be curious to know.
From a public policy perspective, it makes no sense that it wouldn't apply because...
Only thing is that, the only thing is that when you have a physical landmark building, you cannot build on it. It, it stays as it, that's why you transfer the floor area, whereas interior, you can build over it and interior stays. So that's one of the reason why I'm kind of like, I'm on the edge...
Now, seventy-four seven-elevens even work to build a tower next door to a landmark if it's on the same zoning lot. It's a pretty amazing special permit. So anyway, I'm gonna let you guys do that because we may not be able to, um, justify all of the requested waivers, right? Okay.
We appreciate that. We'll explore that option. Um, it is our intention to satisfy the board and to proceed at BSA, but we'll, we'll examine that as well.
Okay, great. All right then, thank you everyone very much. Nice to see you all and those of you in...
Thank you.
Your faith is anyway.
Bye-bye.
Sorry?
Sorry, what is our submission date if we're, our...
No, we don't. Yeah, we'll let you know. So all we do is I know eight weeks to submit, and then by probably around Friday, we'll have the calendar set up for the next...
Also, Chair, if, uh, the applicant could follow up with me, um, I don't know if the extent of the project changes will affect the environmental review, but I don't want to delay it by doing it twice if possible, so we could, if you could discuss with your team and let me know, um, how you wish to proceed.
I'll, I'll be in touch, uh, Ms. Fink. Thank you very much. And also, thank, you know, we, uh, uh, the, the, the whole BSA staff has just been really helpful. We've gotten great notices of comments. We really appreciate it, and, um, we're, you know, lucky to be working with everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
For your incredible endurance. Okay. All right, everybody, good night.
Good night.